Pursuant to Section 84, 1411 of the Nebraska. Of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular board meeting of the educational, educational Douglas School, I'm sorry, Board of Education of the Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Number 19 will be held Monday, November 15th, 2014, at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room at Teacher Administration Center, 3215 Coming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administration Building during working hours. Pursuant to Section 84, 1412 of the Nebraska statute, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join, please stand and join us in the, for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Pact 327.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fay.
Here.
Gadding.
Here.
Merrick.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Present.
Underwood.
Present.
Vargas.
Present.
Wayne.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Nine Ice.
Moving on to E. School Spotlight. Mr. Andrews.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening. We are thrilled to have some very special guests with us tonight. Last week, as you know, North High's football team won its second consecutive state championship, and tonight they're on hand to tell us all about it. Please join me in standing up and applauding for our state champions. Come on.
Well, thank you. Mr. Wayne and Board of Education members, thank you for the opportunity to recognize our student athletes and coaching staff tonight. Achieving our goals took a lot of dedication, sacrifice, teamwork, and effort by the coaches and students. We are grateful for the many people who have supported us, starting with our principal, Mr. Haynes, and our athletic director, Mr. Jim Savio, our academic coaches at the study table, and the Omaha North High faculty and staff. Our school's band, cheer, and dance teams provided a great game day atmosphere while they showcased their talents. Thank you to the district leadership, Mr. Evans and Bob Danahauer, for their support, and of course, our fans, the parents, grandparents, families and friends, alumni, and other members of the community. A special thank you to the coaches' spouses. It is fitting that in celebrating the 90th anniversary of Omaha North High School, that our football team made history as the first Omaha public school to win back-to-back state football titles. Members of the 19, uh, members of North's 1961 team, the most recent Omaha North team to go through an entire season undefeated and untied, have interacted with our team and have modeled how to give back to their school. We play our home games at Nile Kennick Stadium, named for the Omaha Public Schools graduate to go on and win college football's Heisman Trophy 75 years ago. Kennick was known not only for his football talents, but his academics, integrity, and dedication. I won't lie to you, championships are nice, and we may not have a future Heisman Trophy, you never know, on this team, but seeing these young men grow and strive for excellence to achieve their goals is what makes this job special. Congratulations, men. Thank you.
Mr. Haynes, is Mr. Haynes here? You know, you never pass up an opportunity to speak on a microphone, just wanted to make sure I extend that to you. See, I told you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and other members of the Board of Education, and Mr. Evans. Thank you for inviting us to this, uh, great occasion and to recognize our student athletes for a job well done. Uh, back-to-back, 13-0, with an average of 47 points per game on offense, and defense is 11.1 per game. And that says a lot for a young, group of young men that come through and persevere, and which make us all proud. You're part of that, and to show you our appreciation, each one of you has been given a North High back-to-back shirt, and I think on the back of it, it says, "It's what you do in November is what you remember." So, each one of you, I'd encourage you to put it on and support the Vikings. Thank you.
Appreciate it, and congratulations to North High. What a successful year, and it was a little cold, uh, down there this year, and, uh, thank you for everybody who attended, and it was great to root you guys on. Mr. Evans.
Thank you, President Wayne. Uh, just let me echo those comments. Last two years been pretty exciting, kind of cold out there, colder for you guys on the field, uh, but great, great victories and exciting times to be a part of, uh, all the success you're having. But your whole school, did you know your principal got a street named after him this year? Now, that's something, too. We might give Mr. Gene Haynes a round of applause. Principal Haynes, uh, it says a whole lot about the school, it says a whole lot about the leadership and the staff and the students at North High. The Vikings are, are on a really good role and your models for our whole, uh, school system. And I know many of you I've seen at different activities where you're mentoring now with middle school young people and elementary, and I really ask you to continue doing that because the truth is, they look up to you. They look up to you because you're winners, but they look up to you because you're good people. And so, we thank you for being those kind of quality young people that, that OPS is made up of. Uh, and I do hope we have a chance, Mr. Andrews, I'd like to get a picture of our team and make sure we get, get that on the front page so that we have that. So, if our young men, before we leave tonight, I don't want to cut off board members, we also may want to say something, but we'd sure like to have a picture of this championship team so that we can keep that on the front page for a little while of our, of our, uh, website. Thanks, and congratulations again, Coach, and, and, and coaching staff and everyone else. Thank you so much.
So, if, uh, you guys will come up right here along with coaches, uh, we want to make sure you guys all take a picture and get recognized for being here tonight. So, come on, Marquis. See, forgot I uncoached a lot of y'all. Come on up. Moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications, Mr. Evans.
Thanks, Superintendent Wayne. Couple of things. First, just a note, I did meet with the Senate Ed. Meeting Committee, Committee today to discuss some of the learning community positions that we all took, uh, recently, and had a good conversation, really nothing more than just kind of introduction. We don't know where the committee's going to be on it. This was our first chance, uh, to answer questions to them. They were certainly receptive and thankful for this school board and the other school boards for looking and discussing about how we review and analyze what's good and what needs to be improved with the learning community. So, I thought that was a fruitful conversation today. Also attached to the superintendent's report here, you'll notice we've got information on standards-based grading, and I wanted to remind the community, too, that we are continuing to look at all of that because it's, there's been an evolution over time with a timeline that includes a rollout in 2010 that, uh, probably didn't go as smooth as everyone would have liked, and then it's an evolution over time. And we're in the midst now of doing a district-wide, uh, survey that'll be done by an external group to kind of get a full picture of what's it mean for elementary schools, what's it mean for middle schools, what's it mean for high schools, what are the challenges today, what are the things that are working well, what are the things that aren't working as well as we'd like them to work in the future. So, I wanted the community to be aware of that, too, because there has been, uh, some, uh, some discussion in the media, too, so I wanted that out there. Uh, also, if you look in the superintendent's notes, you'll see a strategic plan update. One of the comments that came to us from, uh, our critical friend analysis, Cross and Joffe, just was, "The school board didn't feel like they knew all the updates that was going on with the strategic plan." So, we've attached that document, uh, to my report, so please take a chance to look at that and all the work that staff's involved with, uh, right now. So, we wanted you to be aware of that, and please ask questions if there's anything we can provide, uh, that will maybe give you more updates than what we've provided in that document. We've tried to create it in a pretty compressed summary so that it wouldn't take a whole lot of time to go through, but give you an idea of the work that we're doing on top of the existing items that are certainly moving pretty fast and furious, and you can certainly see a lot of those that are on, uh, our agenda for tonight's meeting. So, uh, thank you again for all of you that have participated in so many activities in the recent months with not only athletic events, but other activities. I've seen a lot of board members participating in activities throughout our district and really appreciate the work we're doing to try to continue moving forward at a fast pace. Thank you, President Wayne.
Any board member reports or communications? Mrs. Fay.
Thank you. On the 18th of November, I attended the, um, Special Education Family Night that was here in this room, and it was, um, this is the, I don't, I've attended it before. It's a great event, and it's, um, open to the public. Anybody can come, but it's heavily attended by families who have a child in special education in the district or who are going to be coming to the district with a special ed, a child who will need special education services. And it's sort of like a fair. So, this room was set up with booths for not only all of the different special education, uh, programs and services that we provide as a district, but also, um, many of the third-party vendors that provide services to the district or are partners with the district in some way. So, it's, it's a great, uh, community partnership event. Um, staff members are here. There were lots of little kids running around. Someone was giving away little balls. So, it was just like a pinball machine in here with little kids and little balls, and, um, it was a relief. It was a fair. It was fun, and it was happy, and it's great to see all of the different things that the district provides for families of students whose needs go above and beyond what a typical day at school can provide.
Any other communications? Mrs. Gadding.
I just want to remind everyone, and I think, um, you received an email today, but the OSER's interviews for the Open Position for Business Person will be at 6 o'clock on Wednesday evening, if anyone can attend. And if you do plan to attend, I know Matt Ray is out today. Um, would you let Megan know just so that she can keep track to make sure that if it becomes an open meeting issue, that she can get everything set up ahead of time? Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Scanlon?
Uh, since our last board meeting, I was able to attend more as a parent than a board member. Uh, the dual-language celebration that was held here at the TAC auditorium, uh, it was a great, um, great presentation from multiple schools that, uh, just emphasized the dual-language program that we're offering within OPS, and it was, uh, it was great to see all the different schools, uh, throughout our district, um, contributing. And, uh, I will say, okay, my daughter had a speaking part, so. It was, it was great, though. It was, it was well, well-presented, and, and everything went smoothly.
Any other communications? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Uh, first, we have Mr. Fred Conley. Please state your name, last name, spelling of your fir, uh, of your last name and address. You will have five minutes, um, to speak.
I think I wanted, I haven't seen the final document regarding the Jacobs contract and the inclusion.
Before you start talking, I mean, uh, can you state your name?
Fred Conley. My address is 3354 North 37th Street. I think my comments were related to the Jacobs contract and the inclusion part of your agenda. So, I'd much rather wait till I see the final document regarding those items.
Um, the way our, structure of our meetings are that we allow public comment for the beginning of the meeting, um, and we do not necessarily go back for a specific item. So, this would be the time now to comment.
Well, not knowing what that document includes, I guess I'd like to say that, uh, it was laid over. I think I'd like to congratulate the school board on laying it over because it had no inclusion in it. Uh, I would hope that we, that I don't hear tonight a public relations, uh, presentation, but rather a plan that talks about how inclusion is actually going to occur over the next three years of the building projects that the school district is willing to do. So, it's kind of hard when you don't see the document what you can speak to, but in terms of general terms, I'm waiting to see what that final document includes, and if I don't get to speak to it, and I will speak to it the next time you have a board meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Chris Prue. Uh, please state your name, last name, spelling of your last name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Chris Prue, Omaha Education Association, P-R-O-U-L-X. Business address is 4202 South 57th Street, Omaha 68117. Um, here to speak tonight about the Omaha 75 North Project. Um, there was a committee meeting this afternoon that I was able to attend and participate in, and, um, part of that dialogue that was taking place, um, we were really trying to be very thoughtful and intentional about honoring what you, as the board, requested for at the last school board meeting, wanting to get teacher input and getting, um, all the stakeholders on board with whatever it is that we're going to do. Um, what, part of what was coming out of that conversation, however, is, uh, nobody probably advocates more for getting teacher input than I do. Uh, but it, we want to make sure that what teachers are giving input into, uh, that the teachers understand what it is they're being asked to talk about or give input about. And currently, um, there's a lot more questions than answers regarding this project. And, uh, when I met with teachers myself a few weeks back, uh, I, I found myself just trying to help them come to terms with what might be rather than what is. And going out now and getting input from them when they don't know what it is or what they're going to be asked about, uh, the input's going to be all over the board. Uh, and I don't think the input that we would get as a committee is what we really need in order to help craft a good plan. Uh, as I said this afternoon, it, it's really important that we ask the right questions of the teachers so that we get the right answers. Uh, the teachers are eager to work with this, but, um, having had a chance to go to Atlanta a couple of weeks back, uh, as part of the district team, uh, I, I, I think there's an opportunity to take what they're doing at Charles Drew and, and bring that back as a really good blueprint and let you, as a board, see that and to make a decision, i- is this the right starting place for, for this conversation? Uh, and I think if, if those teachers knew what that blueprint was, and they were presented with some sort of a document like that, and then asked to give input into it, they'd be better positioned to give quality input and feedback. Um, but what was coming back from the school board at that, at the last meeting, or at least what some of the takeaway is, is, um, being asked to slow down the process and be, asking not to come up with a plan until we've engaged the stakeholders first. And I, I guess what I'm saying is, there may be a bit of a cart and horse dilemma here, that if we want to get good input from stakeholders, uh, it, it's important to have a good starting document that they can look to, uh, to give input on. Uh, and then also, knowing whether or not this board is serious about moving forward sooner than later. I think in, in many teachers' minds, uh, what they're wanting to give input on is whether or not you should even move forward. So, again, is that the input that you want? Do you want teachers telling you whether or not you should, or are you looking for input regarding what the plan should be when we do go forward? And again, because there's more unknown than knowns, I don't know if we're going to get, um, all the right input. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the other things I brought up was, um, the teachers that were asking to give input into the plan, I think it would make more sense if the, if that group or the teachers who were going to be working in that particular school down the road, uh, rather than having current staff weigh in on something and then in turn, maybe they don't end up working there, uh, in the future, and then the staff who end up working there-
Thirty seconds.
-to have a plan that they didn't weigh in on, I, I think, again, comes up with potentially more, more problems than fixes. So, I guess what I'm asking the board to consider this evening is, uh, is there a way to have a timeline by which you can look at what Charles Drew is doing, uh, use it as a blueprint going forward, and, um, give us as a committee some more clarity around how to best plan and meet what it is you're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, Mr. James Enright, and, uh, you'll have five minutes. Please state, spell your last name, and, uh, Mr. Brown, let you know when there's thirty seconds left.
Um, my name's James J. Enright, 3303 R. Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68107. Mr. President, members of the board, I just want to have a brief comment here on, first of all, on this new contract that's coming up for managing the implementation of our recent bond issue, phase one of recent bond issue. Apparently Jacobs Company, who's been doing the work so far, it's done, done well. I haven't heard any complaints about them. They've, uh, they said they need 16 point, 15.9 million dollars. Let's just say 16, they're on and off. So, what I'm saying is Jacobs, Jacobs has competitors. I think we should put this out for bids, uh, to anybody, and then, you know, have people, we have people here that can evaluate who's qualified to do the job. And I think this, this sort of goes against OPS tradition of sweetheart contracts. How this started, I don't know. We have a sweetheart contract for our insurance. We have a sweetheart contract for our, our legal services, I know that. And I would imagine most of our contracts are sweetheart contracts. I'm not positive, but I know we have those, those, those two big ones. And it's fine to have a sweetheart contract, but I don't think you have, you have a, in our, in our statement, we have, we say, "Efficient use of district resources." That's one of the goals that's stated. I don't think that's the most efficient use of district resources to give people sweetheart contracts. So, I think everybody, so I would like to see this put out, and I think you might be surprised if we could save millions. I would like to see all contracts of any size, say over $25,000, put out for, for bids. And this is fair to every, this is more fair to the other people. We're, we're favoring one, one company. The free enterprise system says, "Let everybody get in there and compete, and we'll save a lot of money." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Brown, do you have any more public comment?
No.
Thank you. Moving on to H., Consent Agenda Item. Our entertaining motion to approve the consent agenda item that is before us. Items.
Still moved.
It's a motion on the floor by Mrs., Ms. Williams.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Gadding. Any abstentions? You're in on roll call.
Gadding.
Aye.
Merrick.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Nine.
Ice.
Motion carries. Moving on to I-1A Information Item, Community Eligibility Provision. Dr. Tranquist.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. Members of the board and Superintendent Evans, I'd like to call Tammy Yarman, Director of Nutrition Services, to the podium to discuss the community eligibility provision pilot that we're about to implement.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Wayne, Mr. Evans, and school board members. We've come to you with six schools, which we are going to start in January. Uh, they're listed on your report. They're the top six schools that are on the data sheet, uh, that we put together with all the numbers, and, um, I'm willing to entertain any questions. Again, April 1st of 2015, we will again run the data for, um, all of our schools to see how we can expand it for the following year. Any questions? I can help.
Mrs. Fay.
I don't have any questions. I just, excuse me, want to thank you for working in a timely manner with this. I, I noticed in the report, I think it's the January 15th is the start.
Yeah, January 20th.
January 20th, thank you, is the start, and I, um, so that's next semester.
Well, and we thought, after the holidays, with all the rush in the mail, that that would be an opportune time to send all the mailings home to the parents informing them of our changes.
So, I know that, um, the only way to know what questions are out there is to do this, and then the questions will present themselves, and so going into this again in the fall, you'll have so many more answers than trying to answer all the questions ahead of time before you even know what they are. So, I applaud you for taking a bold step and doing, um, something that's, uh, right for just so many kids, so.
Well, there was a team that worked on this together, and, uh, we came up with our six schools and working with the Nebraska Department of Education, too, and developing their form. We're ready to charge ahead and, and expand it next year.
Well, and it's great that the NDE's been so cooperative and an easy partner to work with, because I know they want this to work as well. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Scanlon?
Could you state just for public, um, information, which are the six schools?
Um, the six schools are Druid Hill Elementary, Franklin Elementary, Kennedy Elementary, King Elementary, Low Threat Magnet, and Saratoga Elementary. And I notified the principals before the holiday break that their schools would be, uh, mentioned tonight at the board meeting.
Could you, um, most of those were elementary schools. Is, um, Lathrop Elementary, or is that middle school?
It's, they're all elementary schools.
They're all elementary schools?
Yes.
Um, I guess as we go through this process, is there going to be any, um, issues with it being just piloting at elementary versus middle school and high school?
Well, I think what we'll do after this year, when we get into April of next year, is take a look at the data again and see how maybe we might be able to spread those numbers out to include more schools, and maybe pilot in middle schools also, because they're the next ones when you're looking down through the list, uh, to see if we can even add. Of course, we'd have to make sure where we're at with Title I funding also when we make those decisions. But it would be nice to get as many schools as we can on the program.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Moving on to I-1B Inclusive Contracting. Dr. Tranquist.
Thank you, President Wayne, members of the board, Superintendent Evans. Um, I especially appreciated Mr. Con- I especially appreciated Mr. Conley's remarks this evening, because it is our objective to build a program that involves inclusive business processes for small and disadvantaged businesses. But we want this to run concurrent with our bond, while at the same time, being built into our day-to-day processes. We want a program, a plan, that is substantive and lasting, that becomes woven into our business processes. We don't want something that's just lip service. So we're looking forward to doing something truly substantive and lasting. We will look at programs in other entities, whether it be the City of Omaha, Metropolitan Community College, other entities even not in Omaha, to see what kind of best plan we can put in place that becomes an integral part of our business practices. We do have a presentation for you this evening, and I would like to introduce Gabrielle Mack, who is Jacobs Project Management Company Vice President of Business Diversity and Economic Inclusion. And she has with her another individual who's going to be very important to us, Gleitha Glisby, whom I'm going to let Ms. Mack introduce, and she has a PowerPoint for you this evening.
It is, I'm trying to figure out how to bring it up. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, thank you very much. I'd like to say greetings to our Board Chair, Mr. Wayne, distinguished board members of the school board here, OPS Administration Superintendent Evans. My name is Gabrielle Mack, and I am Vice President for Business Inclusion, Supplier Diversity for Jacobs Engineering. I'll tell you a little bit more about myself shortly. I'm joined here today by my colleagues, Mr. Jim McLean, who's our Executive for the Program, Mr. Steve Summers, our Project Manager, Cheryl Human, which you've had an opportunity to meet and to hear from in the past, Erin Bilyeu, which I know you all know as well, and Ms. Gleitha Glisby, who will be joining me in sharing this presentation with you today. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Turnquist. I was invited a couple weeks ago to come and meet with her, and I learned a lot about her intentions and the intentions of the school board, wanting to really put together a program that is sustainable, that is inclusive, and that provides for opportunities for the citizens and businesses in this community. This evening, I want to present an overview of our proposed plan. It's really a joint plan, it's your plan, that we will work with you to implement, and I look forward to sharing more about the details as we go through the agenda. I'm trying to, I guess I'll just push this. I'd like to talk a little bit about who we are, some of the background that I have in doing these kinds of initiatives around the country. I've been in the business for about thirty years, and it's a passion of mine. I'd like to talk a little bit about my limited understanding of Omaha. I'm not from here, I've been here for the last couple of weeks, kind of getting to understand and note some of the issues that we're going to be operating in, and some of the things that are important to you, and I'd like to share a little bit about that, because I think it's important to understand the context by which we're going to be implementing this program. I'm also going to talk a little bit about some of the economic inclusion principles that we're going to be following as we move through the process, what our approach is, and our next steps, and then offer any questions and provide any answers that we might be able to for you this evening. A little bit about me. Well, I've been working in this field, like I said, I've been with Jacobs for twenty years. Throughout that twenty years, I've had the privilege of doing what I love to do, what I believe in, what I'm passionate about, and that's inclusion and supplier diversity, economic inclusion, and that means job creation and small business development. Before my tenure with Jacobs, I spent about ten years in the public sector, working in municipal government and nonprofits, also around, issues around inclusion and small business development. One of the things I'd like to share with you is that over the past, I guess, best twenty years, I've actually led several large programs, like the one you're embarked upon, embarking upon, where you kind of come in from the beginning and set up the right processes and procedures, work with the community, to make sure that these, the programs that we're developing are meaningful and that they really make a difference. And so I've been doing that for about twenty years. I also would like to say that, one of the things that I, the last maybe three or four years, as I've kind of gotten out of being a practitioner, I've really been spending a lot of time teaching and working with large organizations. I've served on the Board of the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, and also served as their Corporate Advisory Chair, along with other organizations whose mission has been primarily in the area of inclusion of small minority women and disadvantaged businesses. They've been national organizations because my scope and breadth, as I've grown in my profession, has been at the national level. But one of the things I have realized is, although it's national, we really are working at very local levels where the work gets done. And so I've been working to, with our various teams, both on the business development and the operational side, to make sure that we have inclusion programs within the Jacobs scope of work around the country. It's hard to talk about yourself, other than to say that my life's work has been around these kinds of issues. If you ask my colleagues, they'll probably say I'm one of the fiercest advocates for supplier diversity and inclusion. Oftentimes, our folks don't have a voice at the table, and I've been fortunate enough to know enough about the capital infrastructure process to be able to be that voice for them as these opportunities engage. I'd also like to bring up Gleitha Glisby. Gleitha is someone I've known and respected for fifteen years in the profession. Gleitha has been, I would say, a trailblazer. She's actually worked, her area of expertise is community engagement and getting innovative contracting and processes together, so that we can actually make sure that it happens and we get the results we're looking for.
Good afternoon, oh, it's evening now, I should say, it's late. I'm very pleased to be here tonight, and I wanted to spend just a moment to give you an opportunity to learn a little bit about myself. I'm going to, I'm very proud to be a part of this team, and what I think that I bring to the team and represent best is an opportunity to hear the voice of the community. In every position that I've had to develop grassroots supplier diversity or business diversity initiatives, I've always started from the community first, and worked back into the corporation to understand what policy procedures and practices need to be put in place, so that at the end of the day, you have a sustainable program that represents the community, that the community is actually proud to own and to celebrate the results. And those are some of the things that I look forward to working in this community. I've done this in the chemical industry, some of the most complicated business practices that ever existed, exist in flow and processes in chemical companies, and it was very hard for them to understand the need for small diverse suppliers, but was very successful in building up some of the best practices there. I've also been very successful in the healthcare industry. I developed the very first diversity initiative and diversity and inclusion practices for the group purchasing organization of about fifteen hundred hospital systems across the United States, to the point now that they are leading the process in the United States for diversity and inclusion, and that was from the work that I've been able to lay down and establish the processes that continue to go. I think that it's very important to understand that this work is something that everybody takes a part in. I will be facilitating results and building out scorecards, so that we'll be able to report back to the board exactly the timelines and the results. And I'm certain that, you know, a big part of this is working with the suppliers as well, making certain that all suppliers understand their role, and how we can build out programs to grow diverse suppliers if they're not here, maybe include some teaching programs for them as well, and I've done that through some university coalitions. So those are some of the things that I will be bringing to the table, I'm very excited about it. I think cross-functional processes is important, and that includes everyone that's involved overall. Thank you.
Thanks, Gleitha. Gabrielle.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to take just a moment here to introduce one other person, who is an OPS staff person, who is going to join us in this initiative, and that is our Director of Diversity and Equity, Mr. Sharif Lawaru. Sharif, if you would stand for just a moment. He's going to be a member of the team, and we are delighted to have him as a part of this.
Yes, thank you, I was excited to finally meet him this evening. One of the fastest ways to jumpstart a program is with the expertise of experienced folks, and between Gleith and I, we've got probably, probably close to sixty years of experience in doing this, and we're devoted, we're committed to bringing that experience to bear here, and it's really going to be important, because you guys are hitting the ground running, and we need to catch up with the project and really work to integrate the right processes and procedures, and that means intervening. It means writing the right language, it means spending time understanding the scope of work of this project and how we're going to move forward, and I'll talk a little bit about that later. One of the things I do want to let you know is, I did a little reading, trying to get my head around the, not only your mission, but the community, the historical, the social, political factors that are going to be, we're going to be operating in, and I think you have to really understand that before you can kind of come in a community and be a change agent. And, you know, it's really clear, you have incredibly and increasingly diverse student population, as well as a business population here, or a community population, much like many other cities that I've belonged, I've been in. I actually grew up in Milwaukee, one of the most segregated cities in the country, and all the people of African-American descent lived on the north side, the Hispanic population and our Latino population lived on the south side, and the Caucasian population lived on the eastern west side. And I heard that that's similar to what we have here. And with that comes a lot of misunderstanding, and a lot of opportunity, though, to really try to bring that community together around what we have an opportunity to do here, and that's using the bond program as really an economic engine to create jobs and provide business opportunities for those who are ready, willing, and able. And those who aren't ready, willing, and able, we really need to be about the business of helping shore them up, so that they can become and be a part of the economic opportunities that this program will provide in this community. The bond program can serve as that if we do the right things at the very beginning, and I want to talk a little bit more about them. One of the things I can tell you is, is that I haven't met with a lot of folks, but I've met with a few people, and Ms. Turnquist, Mr. Evans, her staff, I met with some of the community leaders in this community, met with the gentleman who runs or is the Executive Director for the African-American Empowerment Network. And one other thing I can say is, is there's a great deal of commitment here. I was, I normally do not assign myself to a project, and I could sense that there was a real desire by this community to really want to change and make a difference. And so I made a commitment that I would come and work with this team in order to do that, and I got that from Ms. Turnquist. She said she wanted something sustainable, she wanted something that was integrated, and I'm a pretty tough cookie when it comes to making sure those things happen, not only with myself, but with the team, my own team at Jacobs. So I think we have an opportunity to do it right, if we really spend and have the courage to make some changes. And I will need, and we all will need, your support, and we'll be coming to you with recommendations of how to do things differently, that maybe you haven't heard before, but that's what it's going to take to make real change, and for this community and for the small businesses that want to participate. The other thing I've noticed, as I was doing my research, is that we're in real competition here. You have about two, three billion dollars worth of work in the capital infrastructure that's happening by a number of different owners in this community. And that infrastructure, they want the same things you want. They also want some diversity, they want inclusion, they want local folks in this community to benefit, but you've got the Metro Community College, Mr. Conley, which I met with, has about ninety million dollars worth of work, the clean water program has about two billion dollars worth of work, and you have several other infrastructure projects going on, all competing for the same small businesses. If we really want to have inclusion at OPS, we're going to have to be a good place for business to come and to participate. It has to be a place that they can make money. Profit is not a bad word in business. People make profit, they take that profit, and they put it back into the community through jobs, through purchasing, and those kinds of things, that then really have a better residual benefit. So I just want to make you aware that there's a lot going on out there, and we're going to really have to think about how we want to build capacity. It's clear from your documents, from the things that I've read and heard about you, that you're awfully committed to this, that equity and inclusion are important concepts, that you're trying to figure out how to actualize within the scope of your responsibility here, and I commend you for that. I mean, I could see that, when you guys focus as a board on strategic actions like graduation rates, that you really do exceedingly well. It was exciting to hear the graduation rates and how they've increased over time. And I believe if we had that same kind of focus and attention on economic inclusion and equity, and we'd have to do that together, that we can get some of those same kinds of sustainable results. I'd like to also have you consider, as we're going through this process, thinking about job creation, because in our industry and construction, you learn by doing. And, you know, you start as an apprentice, you work through apprenticeship, you get to be a journeyman, you get to be a superintendent, project manager, and then you say, hey, I can do this for myself and start my own business. When I look at the statistics for small minority and women businesses, women businesses in particular are some of the fastest growing parts of our society, and they're hiring more people than anyone in our country. And so we really need to think about that, the energy that small business can do to be, really be an economic value here. You have a couple of, I was looking at your strategic action plans, and you have four of them that resonated with me as I was thinking about building our program, and that's equitable and efficient systems, engaged and empower parents and families, and involved and supportive community partners. I believe that our approach will address all of those action items. It's pretty simple, it's really about people, it's about partnerships, and it's about process integration. Those are the kind of three legs of the stool that we would be building our program around with you, because it's really your program. The people part is really important, I mean, number one, we have the folks like me and Gleith and others who are actually working in the bond program with your staff, and we all have to work as a team to find ways to identify the opportunities and make them available to your small business community here. And we think we have the experience to do that. The partnerships are partnerships not only with you, but with the community stakeholders. As I was looking around this community, I could not help but see all of the good work that's getting done. And what, instead of reinventing the wheel, we really need to join with those community partners and identify our piece, or the piece that we can do well, and then make sure that we're part of that solution, and I think that that's going to be important. I think there's an opportunity also to partner with students in the classroom and teachers, and really start to create a buzz around STEM careers, careers with science, math, technology, and engineering. And I think we can use some of these projects and some of our partnerships, particularly with the prime contracting community, to begin to start creating opportunities for learning and inspire kids to, children to go into those kinds of professions. And last, but probably the most important, is process integration. Jacobs and a lot of other businesses know how to build and design and program manage a lot of big programs and projects, but what we really are going to do is really turn that around a little bit and integrate steps and- bit and integrate steps. And by that, I mean, let me give you an example. When you're designing something, if we don't get to the designers and say, look, we're interested in breaking down or debundling some of these projects in a way that small businesses can participate. If you don't do that in the early part of the planning process, it's too late when you get down to the end. And so what you'll end up with is a lot of big contracts that a lot of our small businesses may not be able to participate in. So that's another aspect of what we're going to try to do. These are some of the principles, and some of them are inspired by your action strategies and your principles. Being sustainable, meaning we're going to have solutions that are going to meet multiple needs in equitable ways. We want to build a program that outlasts us. We're only going to be here for a short time to help you, and we hope that this program will become a part of the way that you do business. We think that economic inclusion should be a success criteria. And by that, I mean that you can build the best school with the best materials, with the best design, and if we have not done it in a way that allows for community businesses to be part of that, I don't think it's a success. You know, I think that with the diversity that you have here, I think we're going to find that there's going to be a lot of opportunity to get your community involved in helping build the schools, because people support that which they help create. That's been something I've learned for much of my career. And so if they're involved in creating the schools, they will sustain them. They will care for them. I've even had a program in Detroit that I worked with that was just exciting, because we had a student program called the Days Academy, the Detroit Science Academy. And we had a Saturday program and a summer program. And the students actually took the landscaping of a new school, and, and they actually managed the whole landscaping project. And it was exciting to see them. They went and, you know, they had guidance with our engineers and our landscape artists and that sort of thing. But they actually did the work themselves. And do you know what? They take care of that. They, you know, it was just an exciting opportunity for them, not only to learn, but to participate in building their own school environment. Accountability and transparency are critical for any initiative that we do. And we want to be open with you. We want to be accessible to you, and as we develop, because we're going to be asking probably as we go through this for some real serious discussions about policies that potentially could be barriers to inclusion. And if we find them, we're going to identify them, and we may have to do something about it. And that will take courage on your part to, to change. And then we're going to leverage existing resources. There's so many initiatives going on in this community, particularly in the north and south Omaha, and within the university systems, that we don't have to do it all, but we could work with them to partner and, and really bring those resources to bear on the objectives that we have for our program. I've talked a little bit already about this. I think the big thing I want to say is, is that we will be the proactive advocates and the voice for the small business community within the bond program and within the team that we have here. Our approach, I kind of liken our approach to saying, you know, would, kind of, would you send somebody out, a contractor, and say, go build a school. Just, you know, build us a school. We wanted to accommodate this many people. Without having data, without having done the surveying, without having done the assessments. And so I know many people want to have a full-fledged program. But frankly, it would be, I think, a bit presumptuous of me to come here today to you and tell you that I know what's good for Omaha, without having spent some time understanding, how, how many businesses do you have here? Who does what? You know, kind of looking at the landscape of what the capabilities are. Do we need to do training? Do we need to think about jobs? And so really, I think it's going to be critical for us to hit the ground running, that we're going to really have to do a market analysis. Now, I think there's a lot of information out there that we can gather to do that, but it needs to be tailored to the opportunities that the bond program's going to be presenting within the next three to five years. And that has to do with professional services, as well as construction, and possibly other kinds of services that some of your local businesses can get involved in. We need to develop a database, and we need to actually spend time looking at your current documents, your current contract language is, and making sure that we have inclusion and equity built into the language in order for us to be able to get that. And why is that important? It's important because many of our businesses here may be small, and they will be probably working as subcontractors. And so one of the things that I think is extremely important is also to, to get prime contractor engagement. I have never had a successful program that I did not get prime contractor and consultant involvement, because many of the contracts that they're going to, we're going to let are going to be through them, and we're going to be asking them to, to provide opportunities for smaller businesses. So I like to get out there upfront, meet with them, identify what their issues are, and get their support, because they can help with the training. They can help with some of the technical assistance. And obviously, we're going to be putting requirements on them that we're going to ask them to meet. So that's a big part of it. And the other thing is, is we need to foster some relationship building. In most segregated communities that I've been a part, people live in different worlds. And so you have an opportunity to bring communities together, the big primes that you have locally here that are doing your work, and some of the small businesses that in fact have not had an opportunity or did not know about it. So that's one of the things that we intend to do. And then we need to look at the work of the contract, and then help businesses understand how to do business with OPS. So that means, what are your documents? What are your requirements? How do they prepare? Do they need to get certified? Do they need to get pre-qualified? And somebody's got to be there, holding their hands and making sure that they're successful. And that's the role that Gleetha and I will play in your program. Last but not least, we've got to monitor and report accomplishments. We've got to develop some key metrics. I think we should do that early and working together. What is it that we really want to see? What results do we want to see at the end of three years or five years when the money has been spent? Do we want to see a percentage of those dollars actually staying in this community? Do we want to monitor? We absolutely want to do that, and we want to monitor and report achievement. We also want to document all of the utilization at whatever level it is. It may be prime. It may be sub. It may be indirect costs. But wherever we can show that we are actually having economic inclusion, we need to make sure that we capture those dollars and that we report them in our, in our reports. Finally, we want to do some regular, rigorous and regular review of what we're doing. And one of the things I, you know, I was speaking to someone about is that maybe you might want to have a subcommittee with staff and, and board members to sit down and to review the progress that we're making towards achieving those results. Regular process improvement requires real review and self-evaluation, and then making some mid-course changes sometimes. And, you know, you learn by doing. And, and let me tell you, having been involved in many programs in my life, it's not easy. And there will be times, there'll be issues and conflicts that arise that will require really thoughtful deliberation. And we've, we've navigated. We've helped our clients navigate through those sometimes muddy waters. But ultimately, if we have the community, if we have the program in its best interest at heart, and we have to balance that. We have to balance the need of getting these facilities built with the need of inclusion and equity. And I think that we can do that working together. And finally, when we do have success, we need to celebrate and recognize it. A lot of companies, we ask them to do a lot, and we want to make sure that we celebrate and say, hey, thank you for helping. Thank you for being our partners. One of the meetings that I had in closing, they said I would be remiss if I did not really demonstrate what the next steps were in this process. And for us, as we look at this, if, if you believe and understand, and, and we are able to answer your questions this evening, and approve our concept moving forward, our approach moving forward, we will mobilize our team the first week in January, probably start doing some work in December, since there's some things going on that need attention, and we will begin work. We will be meeting with your stakeholders, which I think is critical, the first, first month. We need to start identifying where, who the minority businesses and women-owned businesses and small businesses are in this community, and start developing our list. We need to go through and identify all the scopes of work over the next six months to a year, so that we can get the word out and communicate to that community that there are opportunities here, and this is how you access them. And then we need to present our program, a full-fledged program to you, hopefully by, by the end of March. So that's the next steps that we've identified in getting this process going. And with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our thoughts this evening and our program, and ask, be open for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Ms. Williams?
Ms. Mack, first, thank you for your passion. It's, it shows very well how passionate you are for the work that you do
Thank you.
in our community at large, and, and that you have some passion to do some work here in Omaha. And I just want to thank you for that first.
Thank you.
And you did answer a lot of the questions, you know, how, and what does benchmarking look like, and how are we going to break out, looking at breaking out these contracts to make sure that these businesses have access to them? So you did answer a lot of my questions, but the only thing that I, I just want to say that this is, this is one of those hot-button items for me, and really making sure that our community is very engaged in this process. And, you know, what I'm hearing sounds great, but I'm, you know, I'm going to be right there with you, really making sure of that. It's, it's very important to this community. I know a lot of folks have reached out to me even today to ask questions and, you know, hey, did you think about this? And what about that? And I appreciate that. But there's a lot of things that you spoke on that, you know, it, it was more from the heart. It was more that passion of what you're doing and engaging in the community and those type of things. So I'm appreciative of, to see that you have come on board with this program and to help us with this, because this is important for us moving forward. But I will be there with you and making sure that our community is getting what they need. And, and we are creating some jobs and doing some really great things here in Omaha. So you'll be hearing from me.
I welcome that, Ms. Williams, and I really appreciate that very much, because, to be honest with you, it is a process. And for, for me to stand here and say, I have, I know everything that we're going to do, and we're going to do it just like I did it the last time, without really talking to the community that's going to be most impacted, would be disrespectful. And that's not something that I would want. And it's something I've learned over the, my career, how important it is to really talk to the small businesses and find out what, really what they need. What's the problem? How can we help? And, and I, I don't think it has to take a long time, but I do think it's important to engage them before making any substantial policy decisions. So thank you.
Right.
And I welcome it. Really look forward to it.
Any other questions? Mrs. Underwood?
Thank you for your presentation. One of the things that I, I liked hearing is that not only are you looking at putting procedures into place for this bond program, but even impacting the policies that we may already have in place that need to change. So it's, your services are, are extend further into the future rather than just this bond. So that, I was glad to hear that, because I like kind of the holistic approach. I would like to know how, what is your relationship with the rest of the Jacobs team look like? The folks that, you know, we're all familiar with and that are, are managing the, the program for us. Could you just kind of speak to that relationship and how you guys work together?
Sure. I'll tell you a little bit about my relationship in the organization. I am a vice president, and I champion this for Jacobs on a national level. I work for Mr. Bill Burkhauffer, who's the Senior Vice President of all of our global sales, public sales, public sector sales. I'm actually in, I, I work with teams all around the country. And it just so happens that when Aaron, who is my sales counterpart, came to me and said, the OPS School Board has asked for this service. And I am a national resource to my company and to my, my colleagues. And I, I work on a lot of different things. But when he called, I came and I listened to Ms. Turnquist, and she turned my heart and basically said, these folks really need some help. And, and, and we really need to do it now, because things are happening. And I said, how can I juggle things? And so I kind of work independently to some degree, but not in a program or a project like this. I'm actually going to be in their face, whether they kind of like it or not. But I think they're liking it. And, and they've been great to work with. I'll have to tell you that Jim, I'm excited to work for the first, with Jim McLean. It's not the first time, but Jim and I have known each other since he came on board to Jacobs about a year and a half ago. And one of the things that gave him street cred with me was when I got to Chicago, he, all the minority businesses in that community congratulated me. They knew me from my, my outreach activities, but they said, that's a, he understands. He's, he's someone we trust. And so I'm excited to work with Jim. I'm excited to work with Cheryl. I think you'll see that even in our program, we're going to be working to get inclusion on our contract. Gleetha is a small woman-owned business. Cheryl is a small woman-owned business now. And so I'm going to ask them to get certified and become a part of the Omaha Register of Small Businesses. And, you know, so I think we're going to, you're going to see us walk the talk. And I, and so I have a little bit of autonomy, so I can do some things that, you know, but, but I'll be working as part of that team. And I think that's the most important part, because it really has to get integrated. It can't be just me standing up there. When they're back there doing their, you know, whatever technical stuff that they do, which is whether they're putting those, those projects out, I need to say, whoa, which I did today, and said, look, we need to spend some time looking at how we can get inclusion on that. So what does that mean? It means we have to write some language, so let's get busy doing that. We have to outreach, so I need to figure out where the outreach outlets are in this community. So I've got a lot of catching up to do. I've got a lot of learning. But I will be taking all of that and bringing that back to the team with Gleetha. Gleetha will probably be here on a pretty regular basis if I have to leave, because I do have other things I have to do. But I plan to be here the first couple of months to kick this off and make sure it's right. So
Any other?
I hope that answered your question.
Any other questions? Mr. Snell?
Yes. Thank you so much for presenting today. I just had a couple of questions from your presentation. So this presentation, technically, it's not a plan, right?
Yeah, it's a plan. It's not a program. It's a plan on how we are planned to get to a program.
So it's a plan to plan to get to a program. Okay, so what's the next? You wrote down here, next steps on here, and it said approval of concept. Obviously, is that December 4, 2000? Is these all current? For the slide 16?
Yeah.
So that, that's all current?
If, if you, if you say, go to work, we'll go to work.
So in a nutshell, it takes technically five to six weeks to come up with kind of a policy and a plan to implement, correct?
That's why I've got, I think, March, February, March is, is where we would like to bring something to you that has a little bit more meat on it, based on some real data.
I agree with you on that. You want to flesh everything out. I'm just kind of figuring out, like, how do we still do all these projects that Jacobs has in plan? And still try to implement this three months, because this will happen, start being implemented three months after they started. And I'm sure they've already started meeting with people. So it would be kind of hard to play catch-up if we don't kind of, I wouldn't say, how does that process get slowed down, or how does that work?
Well, you and I think a lot alike. And I asked that question again today myself, so thank you very much for that question. And I, and Cheryl, I think, gave an answer that I think I can live with. Okay, so Cheryl, why don't you tell them a little bit about how we, we know that there's some things that have to get done, because you've got to get these facilities going. And so we've agreed to partner in a certain way about that. So
So speaking about how we work together, today we had a meeting and just talking about the status and things that we're working on, and trying to dovetail our activities of kicking out projects as quickly as possible to meet the schedule, yet be respectful of this process. And how can we overlap that? So the first step was, you know, you may be aware, we've got a request for qualifications and requests for proposals for consultants on what we call the QuickStar projects. There were 10 projects. So we first talked about, our next step would be to interview firms. So how can we incorporate a question or two as part of the interview on what those firms do to incorporate inclusiveness, whether it be within their own employees or their subconsultants? Now, what
whether it be within their own employees or their subconsultants? Now, wasn't necessarily part of the initial proposal that we requested, but how do we make sure that we include it as quickly as possible? So the next, the next group of projects that we have, a statement of qualifications coming in, in the middle of December, we then can incorporate kind of some early language in our requests for proposals on the specific projects. So while Gabrielle is working on some draft language, we can continue to incorporate it along the way. Because over that same timeframe, if you look at that March date, by the end of March, you'll see there's, you know, if you remember that schedule, there's a, what about 14 more projects that we would be selecting consultants. So we would want to include language in our proposals or in our requests for proposals and in the contracts that begin to incorporate it. So they'd be running parallel, but we would get that draft language, you know, to staff to review before you get the final version of the program itself.
So we're gonna take two tracks. And I'm gonna try to catch everything I can that they're doing. And I'm pretty quick. I've done this before and I kind of understand that. And between GLETHA, I myself, and now Mr. Lu- Lu- Luarou, I'm sorry, Sharif.
Sharif.
We're going to put that together and she, and make sure that every opportunity we can to add inclusion and equity into our language for RFPs and RFQs or interviews that we, because we're really talking about changing the mindset of a business community. And frankly, personally, how I like to do it, I spend some time going out and talking to them, saying, "Look, time out. It's gonna be different here at OPS. You're not gonna be able to come in here and just, you know, do all the work anymore. We really want to leave something sustainable in this community. We want to build capacity, and we need your partnership. How are you gonna help us partner on that?" And I think we've got to have those discussions. So there's gonna be a lot of different activities going on simultaneously. But every chance that we get, we're gonna try to make sure that there's language. Now, I'll put a caveat on that. You have some regulations and some state law that does not allow for race and gender-based programs. And I've worked in those environments in the past. And so when we deal with that, I'm gonna have to work with your attorneys. And I'm assuming they're gonna provide me with some guidance. I usually ask them, "How can you, can we do this?" Because it's important. But we're gonna be working. And already, I've had a chance to meet with Mr. Dai, and I've really enjoyed that relationship. And he really gets it. And we've been working on some language just now, just trying to think about how we want to include it. So it's gonna be a lot of things happening at one time, but the most important thing is to do whatever we can to integrate now and then look at the rest of the program so that we really have those things in place. And we're talking policies, we're talking language, we're talking about making sure that we're in compliance with law and regulation in this community. And then contract administration, how are we gonna manage that?
So, I had an unintended follow-up question. So for these contracts, do you guys have your own lawyers to help you write this? Or is it our district staff and Baird Holm that are, is reviewing these contracts to help you guys?
So, we're working with Baird Holm on developing a standard contract. So as we propose language, Baird Holm reviews that language.
Is that money that the district pays? Or is that money that you guys pay?
For Baird Holmes to review the contracts, that's money that the district pays. So we would propose language that Baird Holmes would review and make sure that from the district's perspective, that's acceptable.
They're protecting your interests.
Okay. And the last question I have is about partnerships. And I'm trying to remember that slide here.
Well, I didn't mention one, right now, I just was made aware of it the last time I was in town, was that you currently have a program for your construction contractors for bonding and insurance, which is critical to their success in the construction industry. And Mr. Davies, I believe, his company runs that program. And we intend fully well to utilize and integrate that into our program because for construction, you gotta have that piece of it. The other pieces that I don't see quite is, like, for instance, capital, access to capital for mobilization costs. You know, we need to talk to the banking institutions and those folks to see if they can help us with that.
And that kind of falls into my last question here. Community partnerships. Wouldn't you think that this is something that we need to make sure we bring everybody together and have all our ducks in the row before we approve a full contract on moving forward? So we make sure we have everything down, we have communicated with all the partners, everyone, we have a full plan before we go ahead and approve a full contract for that. I just feel that we're gonna be playing catch-up trying to do these things and keep with this timeline that you guys have created. Because the timeline, if I'm correct, hasn't changed. So the fact is that we have to catch up with that timeline. And I feel like we will miss a couple of important projects because if we can't create a plan fast enough, then it will...
I think we can run them parallel for those first three months and catch those design projects, which are those awards, which is our goal in making sure that we're really communicating now on a day-to-day basis. And it's Gabrielle pushing back and saying, "No, that's not enough," and us saying, "How do we maintain the schedule?" And so what's the right thing to do on each of those projects? But the intent is to run parallel for the first couple of months, get the small and disadvantaged business program set up. You know, if we can hit that March date, we're really only three to four months into the program. And that way, we're up and running with the remainder of the program, whether it be the other design contracts that are awarded or all of the construction contracts.
A program of this magnitude has so many moving parts. And you've got a schedule of trying to get students into your classrooms, trying to get the learning process going. I mean, there's a whole schedule that you, I guess, normally in a bond program, I didn't read all of the specifics of this one, that you promised the community that you're gonna do. And so we're moving in that direction. And I'm willing to come in here and hit the ground running and making sure that there are opportunities in the design side as well as the constructions.
I completely agree with you on that. That's what you're expecting to do. But at the end, you still answer to Jacobs, correct? Because you work for Jacobs. So it will fit.
I answer to my conscience.
To your conscience. But ultimately, you're a Jacobs employee, so the timeline is all gonna fit perfectly with you guys either way. But I just feel on the community aspect, I think we might, I don't know, I just feel that we are, might be rushing this piece on trying to play catch-up, especially if we won't have a plan until March and projects will be getting started. Thank you so much for coming in and presenting. Sorry for taking up so much time. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Okay, so I'm looking at the, I have my schedule here. Thank you so much. So I'm looking at it and I'm listening to Ms. Mack, what you're saying and listening to all this. And I guess, from what I heard from Mr. Snow, is that we don't want a plan of a plan. We, you know, and I think that's the general feeling from the community is that, you know, we've heard that many times. It's like, yes, we're planning on doing this, but we gotta, we're planning for the plan to do the work, you know. And so I think that's the clarification point, is you're here to start the work now, I mean, technically. And I guess, Cheryl, this is more for you. As I'm looking at the schedule, the design part and then the construction procurement part, and then beginning of construction, it almost seemed, we, how it's laid out to me, it looks like we're doing this right at the right time. So we're, you are here to help with that first wave. So it's not that, that inclusiveness is not going to be a part of the first process? So of the first 10 projects, so on your schedule, they're sorted at the top, those first 10, probably three or four of them, we can get included, I'll say, early stages because we can include it as part of their interview process. Okay. Because we've already done requests for qualifications and requests for proposals. So we have the proposals in. Now we'll shortlist to go to interview. We can include language, which we started working on today, as part of a question that they could respond to as those firms come in and do an interview. The next group, the next seven, which, if you look at the schedule, they're scheduled to start design in February, which means we'd be doing selection of them in January. So we'd have a more beefed-up version of that. We could get it in the proposal language, our request for proposal language, you know, what it is we're looking for and how the firms would be able to respond, how they've built their teams, or whether it's prime consultants that are proposing. So... And that, I think that answers my question. I just really want to make more clarification. And I think the one thing that the public needs to know is that the program itself isn't Jacobs. The program itself, that we're, it's ours. And so I think when we're talking about contracts, we need to make sure that you're accountable to us because this is our program and this is our community. And these are the companies and the organizations that need this job. And that, I think that's the misconception. It's that, well, Jacobs is doing this work or X, Y, and Z. This is our thing to craft. And honestly, let's just be real, if they want the dollars for the contract, they're gonna do what we ask them to do. And I think this is a no exception thing for us. And I think, I won't speak on behalf of the board, but that's the feeling that I get in this, is this is our program, making sure that our community is, has the access to the economic portion of this, this long-winded project that we have going on for the betterment of our community. And so just making sure that this is, you're kind of at our mercy with this program.
Exactly.
And if the work isn't getting done the way we're asking it to be done, then I think we would have every right to come back and say, "This was a part of it, you know, this was our area." I'm glad to see that Mr. Luarou is a part of this process as well. I think he will help you really get to know some of the community. He has his own great reputation, and so I think that will be easy. But she's gonna ask the same tough questions, you know. And so that's the part I really want to clarify for our public, is that this is our program.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate that.
We own this. And we are saying, this is what, as a board, whatever we decide on this, this is what you have to do to get this contract.
And we're committed to being your partners in doing that. That's...
Thank you.
Yeah, we are. I am, and I know that my team is.
Any other, any other comments, Mrs. Fair?
So this is all, thank you for presenting this and for the Jacobs team for hearing the board last time and coming back with this information. It's all very new to me. And so I have some questions that came up or came into my mind while I was listening to your presentation. Because the pieces that jumped out at me were where you talked about your limited understanding of Omaha and the needs to do a market analysis and relationship building. And those are really important. But what it made me question was whether Jacobs has ever worked with a third party to do this piece rather than keeping it internal. I don't even know if that's, if that's ever done, or if that's possible that adds maybe another layer of accountability. But what it also maybe does is skips, if you work, I don't even know if there's a local company that does anything like this. But if there is, then you skip all of those parts about, those relationships are already built, that market analysis is already done, the understanding of Omaha and the needs of the community is already there. So it's a hypothetical question, but I just, I don't know if that's something that's done.
Well, I appreciate that. And I, that's why I said I think it's not gonna take a lot of time to do because I have been extremely impressed with some of the work that the nonprofit community and some of the local organizations are doing in this realm. I don't know if they've specifically focused on entrepreneurship, particularly in the engineering and construction industry, which are the industries that we're gonna be pulling from. But there's a lot of work, there's a lot of partnerships available that can help reduce the time and effort it will take to get the information in a way that we can present it. Generally, this project, I mean, any program like this represents a lot of different skill sets and work. And so we're gonna need so much HVAC, so much drywall, so many flooring folks, so many, you know, roofers, so many, I mean, there's a lot of different pieces. And so what I want to understand is how much, when will they be needed? And, you know, over how big of a time, so that I can go out in the community and say, "Okay, who are the roofers out there?" Who are, and share with them what the information is in terms of the timing, the scope of work, encourage them to come and apply, get them together with prime contractors so that we do have teams that are diverse and local. So that's the data piece. We know what we're gonna build, for the most part, and as they get designed, we'll have better information. One of the things I like to do is put into design contracts and say, "Mr. Designer, Ms. Designer, when you design this contract, I need you to break out the skill sets by CSI's, you know, the construction indexes and by labor." Because I used to do workforce programs where I actually said, "Look, we're gonna need so much of the workforce to be able to come and do our project." And it gave me the data that I needed to go out and request for policies around apprenticeship, around diversity, and those type of things. But I couldn't do it without the data. And so that's the kind of, you know, specific. And also, we wanted to targeted outreach. We don't want to outreach to, you know, a lot of other firms that aren't gonna be able to participate because it's a waste of their time. So we need to focus on the work that you're gonna have, the opportunities that this program is gonna generate. And then get that information out to the communities and help them prepare. That's really the work that we're talking about here.
And could I just add one thing? The point that I, that I'd like to make is that it's gonna take all hands on deck to get this done. Looking at the resources that are already in place through the community coalition is gonna be critical. Like you said, that's maybe a resource that we can utilize to pull their data to fast-track in terms of what is actually here. You know, the community knows this better than we do. And so we have, and we know what the sweet spots are, we can pass those on to contracting now and not wait until March to get those firms involved. So the more that we know, the quicker that we know it, the better it is that we're gonna be able to move a program forward. And it's a team effort, it's cross-functional team approach that is necessary for us to get this work done. It's not just our work, your work, it's everybody's work together. Whatever community organizations out there that may have data, that may have relationships that can be established and built already that are in place, those are the things that we're gonna need to know as quickly as we possibly can. And we can have regular, ongoing meetings and create a cross-functional team with community liaisons so that we are constantly getting this flow of information. And that's what's necessary. And that's what other organizations have done in the past to fast-track this work. And it can be done very successfully and sustainably.
Mr. Scanlon followed by Mrs. Gollum.
I'd just like to thank you guys for your presentation. And I guess what we're just trying to do tonight, I think, from what's been presented, is approve a concept. We're not finalizing any plan. There's a lot of, just, we've said we want DBE enterprises involved in the bond program or have an opportunity to participate in the bond program. And that doesn't even exist in OPS right now. What we, we don't have that concept. We don't have that procedure of what does it, what does it exactly mean that we're asking for? So I think that's kind of what we're, what is being presented is just, okay, we've heard you, this is the direction that we're gonna go upon your approval. And from what I've heard tonight, they're understanding what we want. Just with the construction industry, a lot of the DBE enterprises are not prime general contractors. They're suppliers, they're subcontractors, like Gabrielle was saying, they're roofers, they're HVAC, they're electricians. They're not the general prime that is going to be involved in the planning process or is going to be the main contract holder. So I think that that, that's something that you have to work with your general and your prime contractors to emphasize, this is what we expect of you when you sign the contract with us. Because our contract as OPS will not be with most of the DBE enterprises. It will be with the prime contractor, the general contractor. So I think that's kind of something that, as they're developing this, we're trying to make sure that our contract that we have control over emphasizes the DBE program. So I think that that is just kind of what I get, is what Jacobs is coming to tonight, saying, "This is our idea, this is our concept. We're going to, if you approve that idea of the direction that we're going into, then we will develop the program and the processes to ensure that our contracts that we can control are, they have the language, they have the..." control are, they have the language, they have the, they have the interaction with the general contractors that, yes, we're getting what we want even though we're not contractually obligated to the subcontractors, so.
Absolutely. We're your representative in that transaction. And in this case, we're also going to be your advocates for that. So I appreciate exactly what you said is, is what we're trying to do. But I, I think it's a little even more, I mean, we're not just asking for a concept. You know, Gleeth and I have been doing this all of our adult lives. I mean, we, we know how to hit the ground running. We understand what we're trying to do here and we won't waste any time. You know, both of us have, have time. We, my son's grown, my grandkids are around from time to time, which I, I miss them and I spend time with them. But for the most part, I'm here and available to, to work and get this done as quickly as possible.
And I also think emphasizing the working in parallel, that's important because we do have a lot of moving parts that as we go through this process, we're not going to have, be able to have, I think, things solidified 100%. It's going to be a work in process and I think that's, we're working together figuring it out as we move forward so we can get projects to the, to the actual doing process and constructing. That's what a lot of the public wants to see, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you.
I think my comments kind of echo what Mr. Scanlon just said. And so I want to say thank you to Jacobs for listening last time and for certainly reaching out and bringing to us individuals with a great amount of expertise and background, which I certainly appreciate and I appreciate that, you know, that's part of the overall cost that we'll be paying for included there. And I think what Mr. Scanlon said is true. I mean, we're looking at a, the concept and we want to make sure that the concept of what we wanted is in place. And certainly your explanation as you went through the PowerPoint elaborated on a lot of things that I had questions about and you certainly covered that information well. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Stone, followed by Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to clarify, it's a concept, so it's a plan to make a plan. And, but tonight we're voting on Jacobs' contract. So is that, so we're, is that included in that or is this just a presentation?
I think that's a question for when we get to action item.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Ms. Williams.
I just wanted to say, I know there's a lot of praise given to Jacobs, but Dr. Turnquist has really been the person to listen to what we're asking as board members and I appreciate that communicating out. And I look forward to this work, but thank you for your advocating because it's important that we have that in our staff. And, and so I just wanted to make sure that you knew that it was greatly appreciated. And these ladies wouldn't be here without your help and direction in that. And I want to give credit where credit is due and so thank you. And I'll be knocking at your door too.
Dr. Turnquist.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And I, I would like to sum up our philosophy here in that this is something that we don't want lip service for any longer. It's not going to be a badge we wear on our sash. It's going to be woven into our business processes so that it will extend into our processes beyond the bond at the same time we're doing the bond because it increases competition, which is good for the district, that's good for the overall economy and because it's the right thing to do.
I heard the word approval a couple of times, but just for the public, we are not necessarily approving a concept with the inclusive contracting because it's listed as an information item on our agenda. This was just information that was presented to us. Where this language may be found is in the I-2C of a contract that is presented a part of Jacobs' contract. But the inclusive contracting program that was presented in the outline and timeframe was for information only. We have not, as a board, adopted this program. I just want to make sure we don't run afoul of open meetings. So I don't want people to, to say that we're adopting or approving something that we do not list as an action item. Thank you for your time and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much and we appreciate the opportunity.
Moving on to A-2, I'm sorry, I-2A, second reading of policy 4000s.
President Wayne, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Evans, before you again this evening are the 4000 series. We've incorporated all the suggestions that have been previously approved by the board and these are just in front of you again for second reading. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
This issue was, or these policies were brought before us last meeting. We do not waive second reading, so this would be second reading of the policies that are listed before us. Does require two third votes. I will entertain a motion. If there's not any questions, if there are questions, not any questions, I'm going to pause briefly because Ms. Nila Sprash is doing two duties tonight, so she'd have to record the vote too. So if there are any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the policies 4000s.
I move to approve the second reading of the policy 4000 before the board.
There's a motion on the floor by Ms., Ms. Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Underwood, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon? Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
Eight, aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to A, I mean, I-2B, second reading of 140100, Community Partnership Proposal and Evaluation Policy.
President Wayne, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Evans, before you again this evening is the Community Partnership Proposal and Evaluation Policy as previously discussed by the Board of Education. All changes previously discussed by the Board of Education are now incorporated into the policy and it's before you ask, a second reading that will require a two-thirds vote.
Motion is before, our policy is before us. We did approve this at our last meeting. This is up for second reading. Policy 1401, Community Partnership Proposal and Evaluation Policy. This does require a two-thirds vote. I will entertain a motion to approve the policy that is before us.
I move to approve the policy 1401, Community Partnership Proposal and Evaluation.
Is a motion on the floor by Mrs. Gadding? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Williams, any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, roll call please.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon? Eight, aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to I-2C, Agreement with Jacobs Project Management Consulting.
Dr. Turnquist.
President Wayne, members of the Board, Mr. Evans, I'd like to ask Scott Die to come forward to address the board about the Jacobs contract.
The, there are two amendments before the board. The first one is the same amendment that was before the board last time with the schedule attached. Then there was a second amendment that brings in and reinforces the concept of the DBE program and contractually obligates Jacobs to establish and create and administer within the context of the bond issue, a DBE program. It also requires Jacobs to work with any contractor that the Omaha School District may select to contract with to assist in that program. So if the district decided to contract with somebody locally in Omaha to participate in that program, Jacobs would be legally obligated to work with that contractor. So we, we, we did that as a second amendment and I think there is items A and B on your agenda, so it would be appropriate to entertain the first amendment, vote on it, and then entertain the second amendment and vote on it. Or you can take them together if you prefer. And I'm here to answer any questions anybody has about either of the amendments.
Is there any questions, concerns, thoughts? Hold on one second. Sorry about that. Any questions, comments, concerns? Did you ever hand it up, Mr. Snow? Oh, if you don't know, I was just told that maybe you did. Mr. Snow?
I don't know. I, I mentioned this before, I don't know if it's the right time to say that, to say this, but I, I strongly think, I don't know if we have to do an amendment or something like that, that we, because the first is the full 15 million, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
For A. If we could approve for the Quick Start projects and then come back once we have our plan and everything to implement for the DBE program, approve the rest of that bulk. I don't think it will slow down Jacobs' job or what they're doing. But I think that would allow us to fully fledge and come up with a, a program to implement.
If I can respond?
You can respond. I, I don't know if the board is going to respond, but I just wanted to.
We did not, we have not negotiated a contract for a partial fee that requires to go to Jacobs and negotiate a contract for a partial fee. The way they operate, excuse me, they have to start bringing people on boards, they interview, they hire people and staff up for this. And so this would require them to essentially stop at some point in time until they get approval to go to the next phase. The reason why we did the second amendment was to create a legally binding obligation upon them to work with us, work with the school district on the DBE program. So if they didn't work with us on that program, we would have a contract default.
And I, I, I understand that. I was just, I mean, I'm looking at the sets of payments that they're getting and the Quick Start projects only go for so long. So we say, we, my mic working? We approve those contracts, I mean, we prove up to, let's say, I think we're saying March is the implementation, if, for this concept that they kind of said, who knows? We, we prove up to that amount of money so we can come up with that and then come back with the full-fledged. I, I just don't want us to put our cart in front of the horse. But I, I don't know where the other board members sit on this. Sometimes I, but I, I have offered that out to other people, but.
Any other, Ms. Williams, followed by?
So I, I have had a lot of conversation about this and, and particularly the second amendment to the agreement. And the thing that I would like to see is at the end of the first page, it's kind of a, the sentence goes in the first and the second, I would like to change some language in that. And at the second amendment. So it reads, da-da-da. Such DBE program may include the use of one or more third-party providers contracted by OPS, da-da-da. I would like to change "may" to "shall." I, I would like, I, I don't want to give the option. I want that to be a requirement with the DBE program. Because I, I mean, I, I believe in it, I want to see it come to fruition, but I also want that to be a part of this larger contract. That's, for me, that's kind of a, I'm not necessarily going to budge on that particular thing because I want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to our community.
So as, as I understand it, what you'd like to do is say that the district would be obligated then to work with a separate contractor in addition to Jacobs to carry the program forward. And that would be fine if, if that was the will of the board. The way that would be presented then is that somebody would make a motion to approve the second amendment, then there would be, somebody would move to amend that motion to change the language in the agreement. You vote on the amendment, then you vote on the motion.
Right. And I, I mean, and I, I very much understand Mr. Snow's reserve, but I think that's a piece that we can control and make this non-option as we move forward. As opposed to waiting or doing, I mean, if, looking at the contract language, we have 30 days and we're, it's the first. And so I think the work needs to get started, but I think this is our opportunity to hold them to be accountable because this is what we are wanting as a board. And I mean, I, today, this was my focus a lot of my day, trying to figure this out and trying to understand what does this look like. But I think for me, that would be the thing that would make me say, okay, this is in the, in the contract and, and, and just, and move forward with that, knowing that that is a part of it and we're not going to leave. Because I, the, the one thing that I would hate to see and I don't, wouldn't anticipate that it happened, but we move on and, and then we don't have the DBEs as a part of this and we've talked about it thoroughly already today. But I would just like to see that one word. I think that one word in the contract language makes a huge difference.
Mrs. Gadding followed by Mr. Snow.
So I have two parts to this. So I guess with that, when it says "may" into "shall," and I know, Ms. Williams and I talked about that earlier, so you were saying that would require us to hire OPS, to hire a third-party person?
Basically, the language that exists now says that OPS may hire third-party contractors. Now, these aren't the people performing services for construction, these are the people who would assist in the implementation of the DBE program. So it says we may hire a third, one or more third-party contractors to furnish that service. And if the district decides to contract directly with people for that purpose, then Jacobs agrees to work with them in providing those services. Now, Ms. Williams' comment to change "may" to "shall" would mean that the district would hire a third-party DBE contractor, presumably somebody local, to assist in the implementation of a, of a program, a DBE program with Jacobs. And Jacobs would be required contractually to work with them.
And that would be in addition to the folks that Jacobs?
Yes.
Is, you know, just have, present to us?
Right.
So I'm, I'm just thinking that through.
And, and, and I'm going to jump in because it's a conver, we really, I mean, I guess as we read this and we've had a larger conversation, I don't think that understanding was presented to us that way. The way it was presented was that with this second amendment, Jacobs would be obligated to implement, or not really implement, but participate with us and we would have the DBE program and that would be a part of their contract. That's how it was explained to me. So you're saying something completely different. So now we're like, what? Okay.
What, what we're saying is, is that there would be a DBE program. Jacobs would be required to implement the program. The district could, if it elected, it isn't required to, it could go outside and also supplement that by bringing in another contractor if it chose. The idea of this language was to preserve the maximum flexibility for OPS that we could. So you had the election, do we want to do this or do we not want to bring in another contractor? It's still going to be your program. I mean, this is still your program completely. All we're trying to do is contractually obligate Jacobs to administer the program and I have every confidence that they'll do that. But we also wanted to keep open the possibility of allowing you to directly contract with a third-party DBE provider, not somebody to construct, but somebody that administers a DBE program, to work with Jacobs in implementing the program. So that was the theory of that sentence.
So, and maybe you said it and I just missed it, but can you explain then again to me? to me how Jacob's doing this work is, within this contract, we're requiring them, how are they contractually obligated to do the thing that we're asking them to do, which is the DBE programs?
Right. It says that Jacob's is to implement the overall goals of OPS in the program, in that they will administer or perform the objectives OPS, it lists objectives, and then it goes on to say, towards the end of it, it says, Jacob's agrees as a part of its program management services, which is what it does during the design and construction aspect of the program, it will assist and cooperate with OPS in any of its DBE program contracts, which is the third-party people we talk about that help administer the program in the implementation and operation of the DBE program, and will incorporate the DBE program in all phases of the program management services in order to achieve the goals of OPS. So that's the, that's really the implementing language, because everything they're doing now is what's called program management services. And so they're supposed to implement it, integrate it, and administer it. That's the, that's the idea of this thing. So what we're trying to say is if you don't implement it, you don't integrate it, you don't do that, we have a breach of contract. So it's like, it's like the obligation they have to review architects, review contractors, make sure the projects are going well, they also have an obligation to do this too.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. And it's not by any means do I think that they're not going to do that, but let's just be very realistic, in big business, in big dollars, it happens. And we can't afford it to happen.
Exactly.
And I would rather be proactive and make sure that we're all on the same page and we all understand this, and that the community that's listening and engaged in this conversation understands what we're saying as well, because I think that's a huge piece of this. If they know that this is that non-negotiable, I think, in the process of bids and all of that construction management work, I think they will come easier when they know that this is something that we are going to be very focused on, and we are going to be paying attention to what this does for our community economically and job growth and all the other great things that this is going to do. So I just, really more for clarification, not just for myself, but also for the public.
And if you feel like, even if Jacob's is performing and you feel like there is an element that's missing that needs to be added to the program, in addition to asking Jacob's to add to the program, you could contract directly with another third-party provider to add that element.
Mrs. Gotti.
Are you done?
No, she wasn't.
Ms. Williams, I just would like to reemphasize, this second amendment does obligate Jacob's to work on this program with us. Otherwise, they will be in breach of their contract. Now, the word that you had a question about, such DBE program may include, doesn't mean we might include, it means we're allowed to include at your discretion a third-party contractor in addition to that.
Thank you.
So, I want to go back to that. So by leaving "may" there, we may, we could, or we could not, depending on if we decided at a later time, hey, we want to add a third-party, if we put "shall" there, then we're obligated to hire a third-party person, correct? So I think, when I was reading that, I was just wanting to make sure Jacob's shall perform the duties that we are asking them in the DBE program, not that we are going to hire an additional person. So I think the "may," now I get that "may" should stay. So anyway, I think what I then wanted to do was go back and just reflect a little bit on the history of how we've gotten to here, not necessarily with the DBE program, but when I was reading through the first item, which is the contract that came before us last time, it made me think, as a number of people have said, you know, what kind of a process did you go through? And it really made me think back to that March 3 date, and I thought back to before that point in time, when I know, as board officers, we went to Mr. Evans and said, hey, if we're going to be looking at a potential bond in the fall, we should probably have a process for hiring someone who could take us through this entire process, get us to the point where we decide, is this something we want to vote on or not? And went through the RFQ process, and I know Mrs. Underwood sat on that committee. So there was actually a process that we went through to get to this point of hiring Jacob's. And the other thing that, when I was looking at this, I just thought it was very important that, you know, we said it wouldn't be over 5% in the original documents that we signed with Jacob's, and we're certainly below that. And just a couple of points of clarification. I saw the article on Saturday, and the newspaper was great, but I did actually call the Beaverton School District today, because I thought, well, that's really low, and I don't know how they were able to do this. And so there was a point of clarification, and she is going to send me the actual costs, which the $720,000 was not the cost of the staff, it was a cost of additional staff that they hired, they already had hired staff, and there were other costs included. So as soon as I get that from Beaverton, I will forward that to all of the board, just so that we're clear on that point as well. And I appreciated Mr. Evans' note to the board on the 1%, in Wichita, that wasn't quite reflective of the total fee there either. So I guess I just wanted to bring that up, and I know Katie sat on that RFQ piece, and so I think people have had questions about what process did you go through, and I think it was a thoughtful process, so I just thought I would put that out there.
Mrs. Underwood, followed by Mrs. Fay.
I had to think, you know, again, about, you know, how we got here with Jacob's, and just to remind myself, so that we, I could also remind the board and the public as well. In Jacob's original contract, it did include a section that said, okay, here's what we're going to do if the bond passes. And it basically explained all of the program management services that they would be providing. So that was in the, that was provided as an exhibit to the contract that we approved, I think it was in March or April of this year. And the, in the selection process, we had four firms propose, we interviewed three, we did, I mean, it was, it was a half-day, I think, of interviews. I think we were in there with each group for maybe an hour. And the, the selection team was made up of facility staff and myself, and we all kind of separately came to the conclusion that Jacob's was simply the most qualified. So that's kind of how we got there, just for a refresher for you guys. So if anyone else has any particular questions on that, I would be happy to answer them. But I just, I thought it was helpful to kind of remind everyone how we, how we got to this point.
Any other? Mrs. Fay, followed by Mr. Snow.
I just have a quick question, back to the "we shall" part. If we did hire a third-party, that would, payment to them would be above and beyond the contract with Jacob's?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, if we did do that, that'd be additional expense.
I guess, any other? Mr. Evans.
Thank you, President Wayne. Just a clarification, again, I'm kind of like Vice President Gotti, I liked the article, I thought it was good to see the fee structures for other districts across the United States, and to see that we are within those same parameters. The 1% in Wichita, the piece that's not reflective of what that is, the company they hired, which was Schaefer-Johnson-Cox-Fry, large architectural firm there, they've done the last two bond issues there, they actually build schools. They build schools and renovate schools, and that's where they get their funding, and that's why the fee is different, and that wasn't reflected. So I just wanted to make sure the public knew that, and I'm quite familiar with the process, having, having worked through it, so I wanted to make sure we clarified that that was not the only fee that Schaefer-Johnson-Cox-Fry received. They receive fees for actually doing design, build, construction for brand-new schools, and did a good job, too. I'm not, certainly not being negative with them, they did a great job as well, so wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And I guess I haven't commented yet, so, oh, Mr. Vargas, then I'll circle back after everybody's commented once, we'll see who wants to comment twice.
Thank you, Mr. President Wayne. So I wasn't here last time, but I, so I do have, I would like to support what Mr. Snow was saying. I'd like to learn more about what are our options with potentially doing more short-term contracts, just thinking about the fidelity of the work, thinking about, just evaluating how the, the potential cost of this. I mean, it is a very hefty amount, and I'm just trying to think through this a little bit more and give this a little bit more time. I'm also just thinking, to be even more fiscally responsible, it is a very hefty amount for a very large contract. And I think part of my hesitancy is also, although I wasn't here last time, when I looked at the organizational structure of where Jacob's as a bond program manager is situated in sort of the org structure of who is accountable to who, it's still, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the level of checks and balances here yet, to then be able to say yes and sign off on a contract if this level of checks and balances isn't, I don't feel like is actually a very strong, you know, system for checks and balances. And it's not really clear on the delineation of who, who does what in this org structure either, and so it makes me uncomfortable to sign on a contract for this amount when that's not as clearly delineated, at least in this proposal. Now, I might have missed that from not being here last time, so if I can get more clarification on, you know, you know, why we have each different committee, and I have looked at different committees, but it seems like we have, we have a significant amount of our district staff on every single committee, and that doesn't seem like the checks and balances that I would expect, it seems like, and Jacob's is on every committee, too, it seems like the people making all the decisions are always going to be Jacob's and our staff, but we don't have an independent, unbiased perspective that is checking and actually managing and measuring whether or not we're making the right decision by, by the bond, by the bond, and by what we said we were going to do with, with the bond for, for our schools. So I'm uncomfortable saying yes with this existing structure as is.
Mrs. Mayor?
I just, I'm trying to formulate what I wanted to say now, because I wasn't expecting talk on this. I think we do, we do have a piece in there for an independent voice, and that's the CBOC, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, that is going to be looking over every decision and every contract that's issued as part of the bond work. That is the independent voice overseeing the decisions. And I'm sure we're, we're not going to stop taking community input and community feedback at any time on this. Obviously, we're accountable to the committee 100% of the time. I do, or I'm sorry, not committee, community. I do have a question, though. I, I would love to hear from our board members that work in this industry, day in and day out, on our short-term contracts, is that a thing that is done as a standard in the business industry when you're contracting for this type of program management? Can I go ahead and answer that directly? And then maybe some other people have some thoughts, too. We could structure it that way. I, we can structure contracts however we want, really. I guess my concern is that you lose some, you lose consistency and you lose efficiency. By hiring a quality firm like Jacob's to oversee the entire thing over five years, we are going to gain efficiencies on the back end, because they will be overseeing every part of the design and construction process of this bond. So it looks like a huge dollar figure. I'm not saying that the amount that we're paying them is a small amount, but I think that the 3.795% is very much in line with what happens with bonds in other districts. And I think that we're just, we are going to gain a lot on the back end by hiring a quality firm like Jacob's.
Mrs. Fay.
So I'm glad that Mr. Vargas articulated something that I brought up last time, but you said it really well. The article that was in the paper referenced that I had, had the opportunity to sit down with Jacob's, which of course was open to any board member who wanted to come, but, and they were great about answering my questions following that board meeting two weeks ago, but the primary focus of my questions was in that oversight structure, kind of how the, the chart looks for oversight and implementation of the bond. And I think actually I redrew it in the, in our meeting. And the part that became clear to me as far as the community piece is they only meet once a month, and they're not, they're, they're not in a capacity to make decisions, they're more just kind of keeping tabs on what's going on and making sure that things aren't going off the rails, and then reporting that back out to their various community groups, but they're not a day-to-day, independent oversight piece. And that, that's what, when I was able to sit down with Jacob's, that's the piece that I felt was missing. I don't, I don't know that I know what that looks like, because this is not my industry, but I, I do know that it seemed to me that it was clear there were, it was sort of hazy how that accountability came in, and it also seemed, it, it was unclear how and who made decisions as they came and were presented to the board when we have to vote on pieces of the bond. So it, I think it's a legitimate question, I think you articulated it better than I'm doing right now, but I don't think that that's the role of the community CBOC. I don't think that's really their role, because they don't meet often enough to, to do what Tony's talking about. I think they're too, it's an important piece, but I think it's different than what you're talking about. So that was my observation from sitting down with Jacob's.
Mr. President, could I make a comment?
Yes.
There's a couple of things in, about this discussion, particularly what Mr. Vargas raised. The ordinary processes that the district has in terms of ad-spec approval, in terms of contract approval, in terms of change order approval, will still be in place, like with every other contract the district has done. So it isn't like we're going to hand this to Jacob's and then say, five years later, gee whiz, did we get it done or not? So that is going to be in place. You're dealing with staff who is experienced. Mark Warneke worked with the last bond issue, and it was, it was very successfully done by Jacob's, working in partnership with district buildings and ground staff. So I think everybody is experienced. We've talked about the processes of payment requests coming in, and how they get approved, and how the payment gets made, and there's a whole process in place now, and how that's accomplished. Approving pay requests, approving change orders, reviewing projects. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a structure, and of course, that's why you hire somebody like Jacob's to put that structure in place, so there are checks and balances. Jacob's has a vested interest in getting this project done on time and under budget. That is a very vested interest of theirs, because, you know, they, this is what they do for a living, and they want to make sure that the next project comes along, if they call OPS, they'll say, yeah, we hired them and they brought it in under budget and on time. So I think those checks and balances are somewhat inherent in the, in the way the contract is structured.
Mr. Scanlon.
I guess just to reassure the board, is the contract written in a way that if things do start to go in a negative way, that, you know, it's not locking the school district in for five years, that if Jacob's doesn't fulfill their contractual obligation, that we can break that contract if, for whatever reason, projects are coming in over budget and things are not going as smoothly as, as we need them to go? Is that written into the contract?
Right. In other words, all of the contracts for design and construction are held by OPS. We're the, we're the contracting party. So whether Jacob's is there or not doesn't affect those relationships. Those relationships would continue, and the projects would continue. We have, obviously... We have, obviously, sometimes a default is better in the threat than the execution because if you ever get to that stage, obviously, it's difficult. But it is there, and the ability to terminate the contract both for cause and for convenience is there.
I guess I'll tie mine in just, I, I'm uncomfortable with the structure. I look at the last, the last presentation that I had or that we had at the, the board meeting. Currently Jacobs is reporting directly to district operations, then to the superintendent and administration, and then to the Board of Education. For this larger project in this magnitude and the, I don't, I think it's important not to have three layers or a filter that would, that we hear directly from Jacobs or a committee of the board with whoever hears directly from Jacobs. The, the structure that was presented to us had no options. And I don't know, you know, whether that was staff or Jacobs, but when I looked at other Jacobs projects, whether it's in Houston, it's in there, there's some different structures there. And I think the board should have an opportunity to weigh in on that. I'm, I'm very concerned that was brought up about the DBE program. While I think Jacobs will do a fine job with it, you know, it's kind of interesting. We had a conversation about a different project, 75, North 75, side project 75 North, and it was brought up that Omaha is different. We can't just copy anything. And so what I hear is that we're going to come here and do assessments and figure out what Omaha's strengths are in the construction world and the, in the trades, but there's no guarantee that we're going to use local people. There's no guarantee to Ms. Williams' point that we'll use somebody here who already has that knowledge. I, I heard from people out in the audience multiple times when I've talked to them that we've done enough, enough assessment on our workforce. We know what's available. We have people out here who know that, but there's nothing in the language to make Jacobs work with them. And what it does say is that the district can hire them. Well, that's an unknown cost right now. And if we're giving 16 million or 15.9 to Jacobs, let's say it costs 200,000 for a local company, that should be backed out of that contract because it's, it is a scope of service within Jacobs to, to oversee and identify things that this local group can do. And I just feel like this is being rushed, that I'm concerned about that. I heard a lot of, I think we can do, well, I heard a lot of probable when I listened to the presentation earlier. But what was interesting is that it was talked about earlier about developing key measurements, developing key things. And we don't know what those are. We don't have a full plan on what that looks like for this board. And I think that's critical before we do that. I think it's also critical that we select our review committee before we sign a contract. I think it's important to have people in places that's going to be our oversight committee or however that looks before we tie them down to a contract that maybe they think is not appropriate. We don't hear that. I just think we're, we're moving awful fast, and I was initially against the, the whole contract. But hearing Mark's idea, I, I would entertain the idea of having a smaller contract, get the quick start projects done, come back with a full DEB program, what that looks like, what the costs are going to be if we have to hire somebody locally to do that. But overall, the, the structure concerns me because I'm not sure if we always have the same vision, and I'm not sure if we always get options. Because this is a staff recommendation, but what are the other options? And I think this is too big of a project not to have other options. I'm also concerned, a last concern I'll say is I don't understand or I don't know how we connect some of the funders around here, people who want to be involved. And I think there has to be a structure in place to say, while we're having these conversations, whether it's about Benson High School, whether it's about other projects that we're doing, that there's a clear, definite structure that we can approach these funders and say, here's a project that we know you're interested in. Because this is a major project, and the scrutiny on us is going to be like never before, especially according to the bond program, we're going to go out for another bond. And so I think if we just step back, and I understand the process that we took place, but you know what? I'll admit this, when we did our first project or our first process in which we hired Jacobs, DBE wasn't on my mind, and that's, that's fault on me. Because all we, we were so focused on getting the bond and getting going because we had a November election coming that I overlooked that. And that should have been upfront a long time ago. We kind of talked about it a little bit in August, and some board members mentioned it a little bit in October, but that was a conversation we should have had a long time ago. And I'm saying if we make these quick decisions, sometimes things get overlooked. And we had a public person who came here tonight, whose project that they're working on at Metro that includes an entire DBE program, who couldn't make a public comment because there was so much discussion among, within the community, within the organization about is there going to be amendments to the, to the contract? Is there not? That's not fair to the public. And if we're going to hire somebody, again, I go back, where's that going to come from? So I just think we need to step back and have an overall program. We heard last time at our, at our, at our meeting that if we vote on our student assignment plan, let's say January, February, that can change our scheduling. Well, how does that fit into our DBE program? Because that's a whole other project like Beverage that could get moved up. That's a huge project. That changes everything. But without having all that in place, I don't know if we're ready to make that decision. So at this point in time, it's not that I'm against Jacobs, it's not that I'm against the DEB program. I need to step back and see the entire program and what it looks like. And I just feel like we're getting bits and pieces, but I need an overall picture of how that's going to work for me. Mr. Snow, you had, we were going to talk second to Ms. America. I mean, unless you're not going to speak, but I'm just, I was trying to get everybody who wanted, who speaks once before we go around to.
Thank you, Mr. President. I read it so long, I kind of forgot what I was going to talk about. But I completely agree with you said. And I, I think it's, I think we need to take a step back and make sure we have every, all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted. That organizational chart, I personally think, needs a little bit more work. Especially if we add, if you read this Second Amendment and we add that person or that contractor in, if we add, where does that person sit on that organizational chart? Do they report directly to Mr., to district staff, or do they report to the board and district staff? How do they communicate with Jacobs? And I think having that entity in place, if we go that route, I think, I think is best. And, and I'm not saying that I'm against Jacobs. I'm just saying I, I think it would be best, my opinion, to approve the Quick Start projects, which are 10 projects, I believe. And then, and I understand you said money's paid on a time, but Jacobs has money that is paid to them on a monthly basis. They have a schedule. And I looked at the numbers, and some of it doesn't make sense to me, but it's laid out, exact numbers. We can pay like that. And then when that process has come, there'd be, there'd be no blimps in that. And we come back with this piece and organizational chart, and we add that to it. And that would give us, I don't know.
Yeah, the current contract's not designed that way. We would have to come up with an amount for those 10 projects. I mean, or, or a number of months we would pay or however we'd do it. And of course, they'd have to agree to that as well. So I, I don't know what their reaction to that would be at this stage.
Ms. America.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the organizational chart is not part of the contract?
No.
Okay. So that's basically a fluid document that we could work with Jacobs and district staff and make changes to at any point in time, even after a contract was entered into? Depending on our needs and how situations change, changed with bond construction?
With any contract, if either party is dissatisfied, you know, you always have the risk of declaring a default if things aren't going well. And you use that as leverage to get the contract amended. And which you can change aspects of it if you want to, you know. We've been in situations where you said, this person, and I've seen this in private contracting, this person isn't working out, this project manager's not working out, he really needs, or she needs to leave. And a responsible contract will make sure that happens.
Mr. Evans.
I, no, I wasn't quite done.
Sorry, Ms. America.
And I, one thing I want to make sure we don't do, because I, I understand the concern of we want to have the language for what the DBE program is in place before we approve a contract. But at the same time, we can't expect them to build a plan that they don't have a contract to build, if you understand what I'm saying. And we, I almost feel like we're entering into somewhat unknown territory because we don't know if Jacobs is even willing to enter into a short-term contract with us and then look at doing a longer-term contract at the end of that short-term contract. Because essentially, we would have to amend what we're looking at now and send it back to them to be reviewed again.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Evans.
Thank you, President Wayne. Just a couple of comments. Mr. Snow and I had had a conversation on DBE, and I know that is a piece that we definitely want to include. And I think the way I read that amendment, it allows the board to have the flexibility to really require whatever it is you want to require, whether it's third party or not. I had not heard the concern about the flow chart, which to me was, as Ms. America said, that's just, that's not a part of the contract. The board has capacity to change that. In fact, it's not unusual for board members to actually pick or allow a couple of board members that want to be a part of those weekly meetings. It's a time consumption piece, but that's pretty typical. In most districts, if you talk around NASB and talk to other board colleagues, it is not unusual for a couple of board members to serve on those. And I think that's, in this, as I hear this conversation, actually had not heard that till tonight. It sure sounds to me like that's something we may have board members would like to participate on that weekly meeting so that they could hear all those conversations. And there's a lot of conversations that go on in those weekly meetings about every single project, and the list is like that with a Gantt chart on all the work that's being going on, going on. And then, of course, that's going to come to the school board in a, twice a month in their meetings. But those weekly meetings, if there are board members that want to participate, is not unusual. Most districts, I'd say probably more, more so than not, will have a couple that say, gosh, I really have an interest in that. I'd like to be a part of that. I can help answer my board colleague questions. I don't think that, that's something that's unusual, unheard of, or that would be a problem. So as I said, this is the first time I've heard a concern on that, but that's pretty typical around Nebraska and other states as well.
Any other, Ms. Underwood?
I think, I think that's a great idea to, to form a committee with, or at least have board members be involved in the weekly meetings. I'm not volunteering myself. I don't know that I can commit to that, but, you know, I, I think that's a great idea. And I would be in support of approving Jacobs' contract, you know, with the, just knowing that the conversation about having board members serve on a committee or be present at the weekly meetings is, is happening. I, I also think it's important to remind ourselves, and like Mr. Dye said, we have very qualified facility staff. They have been through this bond process 15 years ago. Were, and, and did a great job. They came in under budget and ahead of schedule. I, I personally have never experienced any interactions with our facility staff where it's raised a concern for me. So I, I think that inherently, as part of this process, we just need to have trust in our professionals. But that doesn't let us off the hook as board members. We need to be sure that we are listening to our constituents throughout the bond process and throughout design and construction. And we have, we are performing our oversight responsibilities as board members to make sure that things are, are going, things are happening efficiently and effectively because the community will be watching this. So I, I don't think that in, 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 in supporting the Jacobs bond or, you know, having trust in our facility staff, I don't think in any way that lets us off the hook as board members. So I think we need to keep that in mind as well.
Mr. Vargas.
Thank you, President Wayne. For me, I, I think the issue or the, the concern comes less from due, less about trust. It's, it's more about, are we, are we being very, holding ourselves as the board accountable to the bond dollars and what we say that we're going to do? And exploring additional practices to ensure that we are making best use of those dollars? In some instances, that might mean we do the same thing, but only if we, if we have, after doing due diligence, we think that that is the best route and with many pieces of data to inform it. I feel like with the lack of options, and then, and I'm harping on the organizational chart, not because it's an end-all, be-all, but more because I feel uncomfortable communicating to the public that we're going to say yes to such a large contract when we have not even figured out the checks and balances of how we're going to hold every individual party accountable. And that still being fluid, I feel like sends the wrong message to the people that just said yes to 421 million dollars. And that, it is great that to have board members be part of meetings, and I think it's, I think it's, it's less, you know, us, we're held accountable to it. That doesn't mean us being knowledgeable. That means us implementing accountability mechanisms that hold each party accountable. Holds us accountable, holds the district staff accountable, holds Jacobs accountable. And I don't have enough knowledge to say, that's why I'm asking for more options. I don't have enough knowledge to say, yes, I'm very comfortable with this. I mean, are there instances where there's other independent consulting organization, you know, another independent project manager entity that, you know, manages, you know, different other project managers? Or we have people on a, on a middle advisory committee that have the capacity to really oversee this? Because I don't, I don't believe our superintendent has the capacity, even though you're on two or three of these committees. I, I don't see you having the capacity to do this when we really want you to be managing the school district and, and all the other things that happen on your plate, which is a lot. So I'm thinking, how are we going to make sure we have those level of accountability? I'm not seeing the options. I want the options before we say yes to something this large.
Mrs. Gotting.
Well, I think one of the things that, and I appreciated what Mrs. Underwood said and, and also what Ms. Williams said. Well, we have a very talented staff here that have been able to bring us a lot of information over time. And I also think, you know, as questions had came up on different issues even right before the bond, I appreciated the Jacobs staff that I reached out to and got very valid information from, and were able to respond to questions that folks had related to specifics. So I feel like Jacobs has been through the process with us for almost the last 10 months. The staff has been around for, you know, the past bond and the construction that happened. And I think adding a lot of layers, I'm, I'm not sure that really helps us. But I do, but I have appreciated, I mean, Mr. Evans has sent out a number of times the fact that board members, you know, would be asked to be on the weekly committee meeting. Board members would also be asked to serve on the CBOC as well. That when it gets to the detail level, which I agree, CBOC is that kind of oversight of making sure, are we doing as a board what we said we would do and communicating that out to the public? There's also that piece that happens at every single building. And at every single building, you're going to have the stakeholders of that building involved in the process. And if it's in our sub-district, I'm guessing that we're going to want to attend those meetings or hear from the individuals who are speaking to us. So I think that there's a lot of pieces in place that allow for a lot of accountability. And also, the responsibility that we as a board need to take, as Mrs. Underwood said, I think is there. I mean, I think that we understand, I certainly know that I understand the importance of making sure that we use the taxpayer dollars wisely. But as I looked at other contracts that are out there, I felt as though the legal team did a very good job of negotiating that piece. And I felt as though Jacobs did a good job of coming back to us on the disadvantaged business piece as well. So I, I feel like the things that we've asked for, we've seen fall into place, and I appreciate that piece of it. So I think I feel comfortable, I guess, I would say I feel comfortable moving forward.
Mrs. Wayne, followed by Mr. Snow.
Just to be clear, I, I don't, I don't hear any board members questioning the quality or the ability
or the ability of our staff or Jacob's to do good work. I don't, I haven't heard that at all. I think that we all have a lot of faith in the staff and have been very pleased with Jacob's. My questions really mirror what Mr. Vargas is saying. It, it does seem not appropriate to approve a contract for this amount, when we don't know what the organizational structure has been. And I'm sorry that the superintendent didn't know that that was the, really the bulk of my conversation with them two weeks ago, when I met with them, but that's really what we talked about, was the organizational structure, where I did ask for some other, what, what is best practice, what other structures that they've used in other districts. It seems like some places have a staff person who is devoted 100% to just the bond. I don't know that we have that. That's all they do. So, I know that there are other structures out there, and that we probably haven't seen them. So, I, I don't know that it's another layer. I don't think it's more bureaucracy. I think it's actually more accountability, as well as freeing up staff who have other work to do, to be able to, to focus on their day-to-day jobs, without the superintendent being that, constantly that decision-making piece, or without board members sitting on a committee that most of us are not really qualified to sit on and make decisions about. So, you know, that's, that, well, I won't reiterate the things that Mr. Vargas said. That's, 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 that's where I am with the contract.
Any other? Mr. Snow?
I just had a quick question. Are we, are we voting on this? I'll take one and get back to my page in a quick moment. Are we voting on A and B together, or are we voting, are they separate?
It's listed as one, but...
I would like to vote on them separate.
Whoever makes the motion, however they make it. Ms. Williams?
So, you've, you've all heard me talk about I'm going to speak positive things into existence, and, and, you know, the bond pass, and so, hallelujah. The, I think the thing that I'm getting from this conversation right now, though, is it's, I guess I'm, it makes me nervous, the conversation. I'll just be honest. I'm looking at, so if we decide that we're going to do the small projects and then come back, what happens to everything else as we're going along? And what happens to our schedule? And what happens to us being accountable to our constituents and the taxpayers who have invested $421 million in what we're doing? And that scares me. I don't want to say, okay, we're going to do this, and, because trust and believe, I'm going to be the first person at the DBE, that's, that's my thing right there. I'm going to be on that. I mean, I've had these conversations prior to the bond passing, because so much of the community is interested and concerned about what does that mean? And so, that's me advocating for that, and making sure that we're holding, we're holding our own feet to the fire before anyone else can. But what happens if we decide that we're going to do this, or we're going to bid out and look at, get RFQs and RFPs and all this stuff? And what if they're not a great organization, and it saved us $3 million, but we're having to come back? And, I mean, those are the types of things that are coming to my head as this question is, is moving along. And I think we're going to hinder ourself. It's, it's, it is a big ticket. I, I mean, I, I've paused myself a few times, like, wow. But we have the option to get out of the contract if they are not doing the work, they're not doing upholding what we are paying them to do. I mean, I think there's a lot of outs, and I think we're getting so caught up in the what-ifs and the negative of this, we have work to do. And let's be honest, some of these comments and questions, they should have been brought up prior to this. I feel like we're about to hit the wall, once again, trying to backtrack. When do we say, okay, we have an opportunity, we can get out of this contract? There's several different ways that we can get out of this. I think we have to look at that as well. It, it sounds great to, to put it out, but at this point, we're not being aware of the fact, we're not paying attention to the fact that all eyes are on us. And the longer we drag this out, the longer the work goes, there's going to be a whole nother wave of concern, and we have trust right now with our community, and we're in a good place, and we have to do the work we set out to do. We can't keep going back and forth. And I would like us to, to, I mean, vote, how are you going to vote? But let's not hinder the process any longer, because at the end of the day, there's a timeline that has to be done, and there's, you know, we're being watched, every dime, every dollar, everything we're going to do. I'd rather it be done right, that we don't have to come back and redo it later, and that we can move on, and, and, and be a progressive district. But I would hate for us to lose the momentum that we have in all the work that we've spent, because we want to look at, okay, well, maybe this organization could do it for less dollars. But who's to say that they're going to do it, the quality work? Who's to say that they're going to be as accountable as we've seen Jacob's be? And I'm not pro-Jacob's, but I'm not anti-Jacob's. I just want to get the work done and get started, and let's move. Let's stop dragging our feet and, and figure how we do this, because we're not getting anywhere right now. I mean, I honestly, I feel like we're just going around in a circle. And I would like to, what do we do? Because if we're not going to do this, then we got to figure out, what does this mean? So, that's, I just had to say that.
This is the action item on the floor. I will entertain a motion to approve the contract, either, however you want to, however whoever wants to, to say it.
I move to approve the amendment to the agreement with Jacob's project management company.
Just for clarification, is that both, or just one?
That would be both.
You move to approve both amendments to the Jacob's contract. Is there a second?
Second.
So, motion on the floor. Is a second? Any comments? As I stated earlier, I will be voting no on this issue. Mr. Snow?
So, for this second amendment, I think if we go that route, we need a dollar amount in there, to have some teeth for, if you read this position, the stakeholder agreement here. We need to have a dollar amount in there, because obviously, this is going to cost money. If we really want a DBE program and put this into place, it's going to cost money. And if we don't put it, if we, if we don't find out and say that it's going to cost money, then we'll just have someone on the side, and, and then we'll have to come back and say, like, how much money will this cost? We wouldn't know, instead of actually putting a dollar amount in the contract for this. So, we actually have money set aside for whatever entity to implement this DBE program. And, you know, personally, I mean, Jacob's seems like they have their own kind of program. I think if we do implement a program like this, and it does cost money, I mean, there's so many options. We could, we could add that part of Jacob's contract and take that piece, so they don't have to do it. We have an independent source that is doing this. As they said before, they don't know all the answers. They're not from here. We could really vet that. But, you know, when people say that they don't want us to, they want us to be diligent, let's not forget, unlike the '99 bond, four years from now, we have another bond that we want to push. So, any, any fraction of a misstep, that next bond is in jeopardy. And I know a lot of other board members put their necks on the line, saying, "I'll wait. I want, I want my school there. Our community needs that." And if that doesn't happen, we had people that went out to vote for this bond, and then we didn't do everything we intended and wanted to, and then now we're going to go to them and say, "Come vote for another bond." That's not going to happen. So, I, I just strongly urge you guys that.
Are you offering an amendment?
I would like to offer two amendments. Do I have to wait because she already pushed that?
Well, the motion's on the floor. You can offer amendment, but if it's not a, if it's not a, not really a friendly amendment, but I think the motioners would have to agree to the amendment before a vote, or agree to the idea. I'm, I'm forgetting. I'm tired, sorry.
So, I would...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, if, if he makes a motion, that motion to amend takes priority over any other comments, so we would have a discussion on his amendments. So, there's a motion on the floor. What would you like your, what?
So, I would like to amend the second amendment as follows, throughout the change of the program name, from DBE program to SBE slash DBE program. Small business enterprises would be added in there as well.
Is that the...
That's throughout the entire contract.
That's your full, that's your full motion?
That's my first.
All right. There's a motion on the floor to add language, where there is DEB and such language, to add SBE?
Yeah. You just strike through the entire DBE when it says DBE program, and it would be called SBE DBE program.
Okay.
Do you want me to reread it for you?
No, I got it. Is, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Fay. Any discussion as it relates to the amendment?
Well, the objective is it's small business enterprises. You want to include that piece in there as well. I mean, they're, they basically go hand in hand, and that, that expands our pool to allow more of these small enterprises to be included. I mean, that's pretty much simple.
Mrs. Nigusbrass, do you have anything?
I just echo Mark's comments, Mr. Snow's comments on that. It's just a simple addition to add sort of an all-inclusive, much of what you've heard earlier tonight, the adding the SBE designation to that just makes it more inclusive. It doesn't change any intent with regard to the language.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Snow, second by Ms. Fay. Any discussion as it relates to the amended, the motion to amend the second contract? Okay, this vote will be on the amended to insert the language, small emerging businesses. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Megan, I need you to do roll call. Sorry. Roll call.
Thank you, Mr. President. Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
No.
Wayne?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
Aye.
Gadding?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Uh, I have eight ayes, one nay, Mr. President.
Motion carries. Moving back to the original motion to approve...
I have a second amendment.
Contracts. There's a motion to amend. Again, Mr. Snow, what is that motion?
All right. Paragraph two.
The DBE, or...
For the DBE.
Now, SBE.
We're still in the second amendment. So, it would read, if I'm correct, such SBE DBE program shall include the use of a third-party provider contracted by OPS for an annual fee up to $450,000 per year for three years, to provide specific services to implement and conduct the SBE slash DBE program.
Now, where is that language at?
I, I added that. I basically...
No, no, but where, where are you adding it to? Just so...
Number two in the second.
You mean the end of one? The end of one?
It would be the fifth sentence in paragraph two. Bottom of page one going on to page two. So, such DBE program may include the use, that, that's where, that is what he's proposing is located at.
So, it's back to the comments that Ms. Williams had before, and then it... So, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there a second to Mr.? Wow.
Can you restate that?
Right. Could you repeat the wording that you would like to add?
It's the bottom of page one. Such SBC, SBE DBE program shall include the use of a third-party provider contracted by OPS for an annual fee up to $450,000 per year for three years, to provide specific services to implement and conduct the SBE DBE program.
Is there a second to Mr. Snow's amendment?
Second.
This is second by Mrs. Fay, to amend the language to include the language that was referenced by Mr. Snow, with a reference to $450,000.
So, can I answer? So, the reason why, I basically looked around, talked to other people that have had programs like this, they said, "You cannot implement a program like this without a dollar amount." And my thing is, is most of them were saying about our amount of money would probably be, probably wouldn't be more than $450,000 a year. That is technically almost, I think, 1% of the bond. Now, we can have that discussion on where does it come out of Jacob's contract or not, but if we do not put a dollar amount that actually has, hires this entity, consultant, whatever, that comes in to help us create this policy and help implement this program for these next three years, to make sure, I don't see how we're going to do, have someone just volunteer, if we don't put a dollar amount in there.
So, we have questions regarding the amendment. Fay, Mrs. Underwood, and Ms. Williams?
I'm just wrapping my head around the, what, your explanation. The only way I could be supportive of this is if that dollar amount was backed out of the Jacob's contract. I, I don't think I could approve it above what we're paying Jacob's.
Would that be possible? Would...
I mean, I'm just wrapping.
Mr. Die, can you...
Anything, any change in the First Amendment would have to be agreed to by Jacob's, because they've agreed to the First Amendment as it sits currently. So, we would have to have them agree to that, which presumably would mean that we would be using a separate contractor for a DBE program.
Mrs. Underwood followed by Ms. Williams?
So, so Jacob's, in this contract, is obligated to designate a qualified employee of Jacob's to oversee the implementation of the program, and the services of such employees shall be furnished without additional charge by Jacob's. So, I mean, I think I'm thinking along the same lines as Mrs. Fay, although I don't, I just, I don't think that I would be in support of hiring a third-party, given that Jacob's provides this service in-house, and they are, they're providing it without additional And, and based on what I heard tonight, I'm comfortable with what they're proposing. So, I, I don't think I will be supporting this.
Mr. Snow, since you're in amendment, I'll let you respond, and then we'll go to Ms. Williams.
Here's, here's my thing. There's nothing wrong with Jacob's, but the, Gabrielle works for Jacob's. So, I mean, I understand what, what that happens in that piece, but it's Jacob's piece. It's not someone that's going to hold Jacob's accountable. At the end, she, she says, but we need someone that's going to be a different entity outside that is going to hold Jacob's accountable. They're going to hold everyone accountable, and they're going to be answering, not to district staff, they're going to be working with everybody at the table, but they're going to be answering to the board. You guys hired me to do X amount of work, blah, blah, blah. You guys hired me to make sure I hold everybody accountable, and I'm sitting at all the tables and making sure this is happening. If Jacob's is controlling that ship of this DBE program, then we're only going to get what Jacob's ultimately wants. I'm not saying Jacob's won't do it, but I'm just saying, if we really want to make this efficient, and we really want to help our community, I, I think this is the best way to go. Metro Community College actually is doing the same program, kind of hired a separate group to kind of do this, because you need someone that's going to be at the, at the, at the ground level with the contractors, as well as with the project manager, saying, "This is how it's, this is, I can find, we can make this happen."
Ms. Williams?
So, I, I guess I'm, I'm kind of where... So I guess I'm kind of where Mrs. Fay and Mrs. Underwood are as far as the additional piece. But I kind of want to go back because the DBE program is our program. They're helping us launch it, but it's our program. We are, they're accountable to us. And that's, I guess I'm not understanding because my understanding in asking these questions is, okay, so once Jacobs is out of the picture, it's our program. We're crafting it. We are running this. I mean, it's our staff that is going to be accountable to us for this program. And I'll look at Dr. Turnquist and I don't, give me your opinion thought. I don't, I mean, this is your area.
Yes, you're correct, Ms. Williams, that when Jacobs is gone, this is going to be OPS' program and it will be in place in our daily business practices, not simply as a part of the bond. It begins as part of the bond, but it will be woven into our day-to-day processes. The two people that Jacobs has offered to us for the Small Business Enterprise Initiative are included in that 3.79% fee. It is not an additional cost. When we asked for this, they said they would provide it at no additional cost. So anything else is not going to be backed out of their fee that it makes no sense for them to provide to additional people and then back out the cost for a third party out of their fee as well.
So, and then just to clarify, Dr. Turnquist, can you, I mean, what is, can, I mean, I'm asking you to just say, what is your role in the DBE program as Jacobs is helping us, helping the district to formulate this? I mean, what is your role?
My personal role is to hold them accountable.
So it's not, they're not out just free range. They're, they're someone that, in the district, so you are that contact person. And of course, you're accountable to us as well. But, I mean, I think that's, for me, is where it's, I would rather not spend additional money. I think that there's enough on the table.
There is in that agreement. There is in that agreement, the option for you to do that if you choose to do it. But to ask Jacobs to back that out of their fee when they're already adding two people for that purpose is...
Well, and I just wanted the clarification that the DBE program is our program. It's something that we are...
It is our program.
That we are going to have ownership, accountability, governance, and all of that for. I mean, this is our thing to craft and create. And that's, I mean, why I'm asking all the contractual questions to Mr. Di is, okay, if this isn't performed to our liking, is this, we can, can we back out? I mean, I just, I don't want to make this more complicated than it has to be.
They will be expected to adhere to that contract. Yes.
Can I respond to that?
I'll let you respond to your motion and then Mrs. Godding, Ms. America, and then Mr. Scanlon.
So I'm not, I'm not saying this is going to happen, but I can practically, I can just give you, just throwing out a hypothetical. Hypothetically, Jacobs can say, well, you know, out of the $15 million, we're going to only allocate $50,000 towards this program. Then we have to deal with that. This actually pulls at a third party that we bring and say, no, this amount of money is going to be put out. And I would support Mrs. Fay's recommendation to have that come out. Me personally, I understand. I love their presentation. But I think we can have someone that is a complete, and they are experts, but someone that that's the only task they're due and they're independent of Jacobs. I just think we need that. If we really want to have a true voice at the table. I understand we're talking about, we're going to hold people accountable at contracts, but we actually have someone that is their main task. Their overall structure that they work under is not Jacobs, that is also the property manager.
Ms. Godding, followed by Ms. America, then Mr. Scanlon.
Well, I think, I appreciate Dr. Turnquist's comments because one of the things that came to my mind was, if it doesn't come out of the Jacobs' contract, it can't come out of the bond because that wasn't something we included in the bond in the first place. So it would be additional cost to the district. And the word is, the wording is still there as we had that exchange earlier, which says, "may include." So as we develop the program, we can still add that third party. If for some reason down the road, we feel like, okay, this is not going our way, we need to add that. So I guess, I think, I think as it's currently stated, it gives us the flexibility to build that in. But it also doesn't tie us to expending extra dollars out of our general fund. So I guess that's my point on that.
Ms. America?
I have a couple of things. First, I wanted to clarify because, Ms. Mack, I think I heard you say that Ms. Glisby is not a Jacobs employee. She's actually a contractor to Jacobs. And so I see that as not a direct relationship with Jacobs, I guess. Because she's not a Jacobs employee. She's someone they are hiring out specifically to work on now the SBE DBE program for OPS. And something I wanted to address that I've heard people say, we don't, we, people are going to do what Jacob wants them to do, what Jacobs wants them to do. What Jacobs wants to do is what we tell them to do and what we tell them we want. And I think that was echoed in the presentation that was given earlier. It's, we are the main drivers of, specifically with the SBE DBE program, of saying what we want to see in that program and then making them carry that out. If they don't carry that out, as Ms. Williams has said, that is breaching their contract and we have the right to exit that contract then.
Mr. Scanlon?
I'd like to just reiterate that I think there is the accountability. As Tony said, she's responsible for ensuring that Jacobs provides what the board wants. And then she's accountable to the superintendent. The superintendent's accountable to us. And we, as in that presentation, it said that we were giving permission to start developing a DBE, whatever we're going to call it, program. But we still have to approve that program. So I think that that accountability is still back in the hands of the board. And like what Lacey said, we hired Jacobs. And if we, if we approve this contract, Jacobs works for the board. I mean, they're not just going to go do whatever they think they're going to do. We're going to give them direction as a school district and as a school board. And that's, you know, that's our job. So I don't think that, you know, going out and finding a third party at this time, or I should say, writing it into the contract that we have to go out and find a third party. We still have with this contract the opportunity and the ability to go out for a third party, but we're not writing ourselves into that and contractually obligating ourselves to doing that at this time. So I think that this contract gives us flexibility and it still does have accountability for the school board and for the school district.
I'll just state that I know, I agree that there has to be teeth to this. And I agree that money has to be included. My concern is where the money comes from. But, I mean, overall, how I vote on this amendment, I'm still, as far as it relates to the big contract, going to still be a no vote. But I do agree that there has to be money. I'm concerned where the money comes from. And I would agree with Mrs. Fay that it needs to be backed out somewhere. But that's part of the problem is where, again, it goes back to timing and everything else. What if there is two or three local companies who specialize that in Omaha area and know the Omaha market and can do it for a certain price? We find that out after we approve all these contracts. There's an expenditure that is not accounted for and it has to come from somewhere. And so that's why, again, I think it's just the overall step back and look at everything we want. With that, is there any more comments as it relates to the amendment to include language regarding $450,000? And the other thing stated by Mr. Snow? Hearing none. Roll call.
Williams?
Let me, can I make it clear, but this is on Mark's amendment.
It's on Mark's amendment, correct?
No.
Fay?
No.
Godding?
No.
America?
No.
Scanlon?
No.
Snow?
Aye.
Underwood?
No.
Vargas?
Aye.
Mr. President?